Good morning and thank you for joining us this morning at our city council, uh, city council study session. We'll go ahead and get started. Ruth, could you please call the role?
Yes, sir.
Adamson?
Here.
Gray?
Here.
Tia?
Here.
Johnson?
Here.
Loric?
Here.
Manon?
Here.
Flav?
Here. Thank you. We'll move to agenda item number two is the Construction Board of Appeals and Review Update. Representatives from the Construction Board of Review, Board of Appeals and Review will discuss the board's goals and projects as well as council's policies and expectations. Good morning, Lynn.
Good morning, Lynn Transtrom. I'm a building official for the city of Pocatello. I'm also the staff liaison for the Construction Board of Appeals. I'm representing that board alone this morning, but I thought what I'd do is just kind of provide you with the who, what, and when regarding the Construction Board of Appeals. This construction board is made up of five members at the present time. We have a gentleman, Terry Swallow, represents the plumbing trades, Richard Lehman represents the electrical trades, Michael Bright represents the building trades, Richard Nelson represents the fire protection trades, and Ted Booth is our chair and represents the architectural and engineering portion of that board. We do have one vacancy on that board at the present time, and that is for mechanical. So, that's kind of the who of the Construction Board of Appeals. The what? What can the Construction Board of Appeals do? You know, the Construction Board of Appeals is set up as, as an intermediary between building and fire officials and the city council. So it gives folks, if they have any items that they would like to appeal, they can go to the Construction Board of Appeals before going to you folks as the city council for decisions. That Construction Board of Appeals has kind of limited authority as to what they can do. They can make decisions on discretionary calls, discretionary codes, calls that have been made by the fire or the building officials. They cannot just waive codes. Codes are state mandated and, and council, or excuse me, municipally mandated, and so they can't waive those codes off. The Construction Board of Appeals can be used for things such as if someone wants to come in and have alternate materials. You know, in the, in the construction world now, we've got a lot of innovations coming at all times. Some of those things haven't been around long enough to be included in the code, but if somebody wants to come in and they want to use a specific product that's new, we don't have the listing on it, we can't allow it, but the Construction Board of Appeals, they can take it to the Construction Board and they can approve those alternate materials and/or methods. So, again, the board cannot grant exceptions to, to any of the codes or the municipal ordinances. They can only advise. So, the other thing the Construction Board of Appeals does, and is probably our primary function, is fences. We all love fences. They seem to always come with the disgruntled neighbor on each side, but they can, you know, whenever we make a fence decision, if it's contrary to what the folks like, they have the ability to take it to the Construction Board of Appeals for variances on that. That's kind of the, what they can do, when they do it. This is a, this is a board that only convenes when needed. Last year, we only had, we only convened one time. So, they're lightly used, but that's a good thing as well. Yes?
Mr. Mayor? Lynn, for example, the lady on North Harrison that had a challenge with a fence, did they come to this board?
They did not. Her fence was a legal, excuse me, the neighbor's fence that she is, has complaints on is a legal code complying fence, so that did not have to go through the Construction Board of Appeals.
Okay. Thank you.
Open for any direction from the council or any additional questions?
Any other questions? Well, I'm glad you only had to get together one time last year.
Yeah, you know, that's really a good thing. I mean, it shows, it shows that the folks we're dealing with, they don't have a lot of problems with the decisions that are coming out of the building department or the fire department.
Exactly.
Last Friday at a meeting, Ken Pappy talked about the construction, the North Gate development, and that they're looking for new materials, innovative new things like Tesla shingles that have a 50-year warranty and, and our, you know, solar panels at the same time. Are those the kind of things that would be coming to the board?
Yeah, they definitely are. In fact, we've had the folks from the North Gate project and had them present to us a product that they wanted to use for the subsiding. It incorporates an insulating material along with a heavy cardboard exterior that will meet our sheer requirements and so forth. If we would have asked for, you know, if we would have denied that, then that certainly could have gone to the Board of Appeals for, for their decision.
So you do have the ability within planning then to accept those things?
Yes, that particular one, they came with enough technical data that we could look at that. But if it would have been a little earlier in the, the process of that product coming on the market, then definitely that would have been a candidate for Board of Appeals.
Thank you.
Any other questions, council? Thank you, Lynn.
Short and sweet.
Well, the way we like it.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move on to agenda item number three is Japanese Sister City Subcommittee Update. Representatives from the Japanese Sister City Subcommittee will discuss the committee's goals and projects as well as council's policies and expectations.
Morning. I'm Dr. Molly. I'm currently serving as the chair of the Subcommittee. Joan is, Joan Sayer, she's currently our secretary and also our chaperone, who is, is involved with the delegation going to Japan. Program's been around since 1985, just for those who haven't been associated with it before. It originally, I'm just gonna go to our city site and show you some of the things that we've been working on and accomplished within the program, if I can find it here. I got it.
I know. You can't see sometimes.
This is, this is a website within the city's, website that we've worked with Mr. Satterfield to develop for those who are interested in filling out an application and, and coming in and having us, and being a part of the delegation going to Japan. How this kind of works is, is we have a Subcommittee of the mayor office, the mayor's office, and students from 14 to 18 typically will apply, and then as a board, we'll interview these kids. And usually about 10 kids is what we're looking for, and if we see fit, if they are gonna be good candidates, then, and then they're chosen, and, and then set to become delegates for the following year. And usually, we pick them a year in advance. And so, coming up here in the fall, we'll be picking for 2019 delegation. Every five years, there's an adult delegation that goes, but typically, you know, we're working with the youth mostly, and this is, if you can see, you can see down here on these exchange programs, here are the two applications. You can do a digital or a PDF. We recently set that up to, to work for, make it easier for them to apply. There's been some problems in the past with the application process, and so we've kind of tried to streamline that a little bit for our, our delegates. This is, this is just a brief little picture slideshow of, of the, if I can get that centered, but, of the program of the kids, of the delegates coming this way. These are the Japanese delegates that came here last year. And we, as a board, set up an itinerary, and, and then we have activities that, that these kids can come through, or that these kids go through. And typically, they're, they're cultural based. They stay with a home family, a home family that we, we pick and choose and, and screen to make sure that, you know, they, they, they look like they'll be good host families. Typically, we have a lot of repeaters, a lot of people that do it over and over again. But sometimes, we get newbies. Trying to get this to go big. I don't know, on my computer, it goes big, but apparently not on your computer. So, but anyway, that'll give you an idea of, you know, we give them them some of the things that we do in this area that are part of our, our everyday lifestyles. This is a cabin that a volunteer allows us to use. This is, we do, we do take them a trip down to Lagoon and Yellowstone to give them a feel for, for the area and, and what Pocatello has to offer. And then, of course, the food, and, not all fun and games, but, but we do try and give them kind of a round feel of, of the cultural differences and opportunities that we have here in, in Pocatello area. But probably the biggest thing that these young people are, are able to experience is a homestay with the families that, that are hosting. That, that's probably, on both sides, on, on this side of the, you know, the exchange and also in Japan, that's probably the, the most important part because they're experiencing cultural exchange between two different countries. When they go over to the Iwamizawa, Japan, they, you know, they get an opportunity to be able to stay with a Japanese family and experience it firsthand to, you know, to get a real feel for the culture. And, and this is the, this is the delegation here that went last year over to Japan right here. And typically, they'll visit over there, they visit a lot of schools, because schools in over there when they come, and so they have an opportunity to go to three or four schools. You know, we'll go to the utilities and, and see the police station, and, and they'll, you know, they'll take us to some fun sites and some places where kids can buy souvenirs, and they get tours of, of City Hall, of course, and, and there's a lot of pictures here of them going into schools. When, I went back in 2015 as the, the chaperone, and we, we went in to seven different schools because the, the Sister City organization over there put out a blanket invitation for any school that wanted us to come. And they didn't think they'd get that many, but they got seven. And so, we spent a lot of time in the schools over there when we went. That doesn't always happen, but, but we, we did. And, and so, but we did get an opportunity to really experience their culture and the differences between our two people, and got to make noodles, you know, just some of their simple, unfun things that they do over there, to see the, you know, the factory for, for making.
Soy sauce.
Soy sauce and those kind of things. So, it's, it did take us a while watching, and then we, they, they dress us up in funny outfits, you know, as far as, what do they call those?
Yukatas.
Yukatas. And we get to march around in a parade that they have, and it's, it's a lot of fun. It really is. It's a great experience. But again, the host family is the funnest part.
A big experience.
That's the funnest part. You get to go and you spend time in the home, and you speak, you try to speak the language, and you eat the, the traditional food that they offer, and it's, it's a wonderful experience. It really is for these young people to get an idea of, of something different.
Different culture.
Different culture. And that's what it's all about, as far as the cultural exchange side of the Sister City program. Now, how it operates is, is there's a Subcommittee of the board, or of the mayor's office, and it acts traditionally like a, a board that, that, you know, we're, we're a voting and ratifying board. We, we do all the things that a typical board does, but there are some, some, some facets that as a Sister City organization, we, we do try and accomplish. Some of the goals that we try and accomplish every year are, you know, of course, establish awareness for the program in the area. And that's been an issue with this area. A lot of the schools are not aware of the program. And so, this last year, we've made a real effort to try and get more information into the schools and contact counselors. Some of the board members have, have made an effort to go out and contact the counselors within the schools, hoping that we'll get a better, you know, exposure to the program so we can get, you know, more applications. And we want to send, not necessarily the very best from Pocatello, but, but we do want to send the very best from Pocatello, you know, as representatives and delegates. And hopefully, we do get some good representatives, so when, when we do have our delegates over there, it's a good showing, and it's impressive. So, you know, we don't look like, you know, like we're dumb Americans, I guess, but, so we, this year, we've tried to establish a more marketing material for our organization. We established a, a new brochure. We've made some posters and got them put in the schools, made some more contacts in the schools, tried to create awareness for, for the program as much as we possibly can. This is a little brochure that we've put together this for the, for the program. You can review that if you'd like, and, and, you know, any, any feedback, that'd be great, on the program. Another thing that we try to accomplish, one of our goals, is obviously to send delegates. That's, that's a process. We, you know, we, we meet every Wednesday about January with, usually it's the, the chaperone, the parents of the, the delegates, and then the delegates, of course, and, and then some other folk, some other board members that speak Japanese and teach the class, try to teach culture, try to teach language. So every Wednesday, every-
They started in October.
You started in October this year. There's been years that they've started in October early. There's been years that they've started regular in January. I think I did every other week in October. So there's, there's a lot of time, volunteer time being put in, not just by the chaperone, but by the parents of the delegates and also other board members that are coming and teaching these cultural classes that, to get these kids ready, get these delegates ready to represent Pocatello going over to Iwamizawa. And that, that process is from, from application to, you know, these classes that they have to come to, to buying tickets, doing fundraising to get tickets, and then getting them over to Japan and back safe. And, and then it's a life, lifetime, it's a life-changing experience for a lot of these young people. Other things that we focus, we've tried to focus, or some of our goals are, is we, we, this year, we're gonna be establishing the 2019 delegation. So, that process is gonna be starting shortly, and of course, find more money for the program. The program's cash starving. We typically have a budget set up. We spend about $850 in food and, and about 500 in fuel, about 800 in activities that we, we provide for these Japanese delegates. Airfare alone is about $22,000 for us per year. That's including the, the delegates and the chaperone that are going. And so, that's our, by far, biggest expense that we have to come up with. We do have a small advertising budget of about $200 that we've, we've set aside for, particularly this year, because we were developing some posters and those kind of things. But the city gives us about $2,500 a year, at least that's what they said they were gonna do for us last year, coming up this next year. A lot of that's done by our delegates. They go out and fundraise and do things, do things to, to raise money for them to be able to go to Japan. And that's also discussed in the Wednesday meeting every week. And the, the parents of the delegates are the fundraising, are supposed to be the fundraising committee. It doesn't always, you know, happen that way, but we, that's the way it's supposed to, supposed to run. And so, we're constantly trying to find more money for the program, simply because it just is really expensive to, you know, travel is quite expensive for these young people. And, but is there any directions that we?
Questions, comments?
How many people on your committee?
Um, I think we have 14 currently.
Is it full?
It is. I think it is full.
But we have two that will be-
Yeah, we got a couple that are gonna, a couple spaces that are gonna come.
Vacant.
Vacant soon.
Are those gonna be easy to fill?
What's that?
Are those going to be easy to fill?
Uh, sometimes they are.
I think-
They, we-
We have one that is interested right now.
Yeah. We do have a, there, there was a time about a year ago where we were very, very slim. We had eight, I think, seven, eight people-
Seven, eight of us trying to run the-
Trying to run the program, but we've got a full committee now. So that's been nice. But, but at the same time, you, I mean, there's always gonna be a percentage that's absentee. They'll sign up and not, and not show up.
Don't show up.
And so, we've got a few of those. So, so there's really probably, I would probably say, still seven and eight, seven or eight of us that are the bulk of the program, and then we've got some other ones coming up trying to get them ready, you know.
Any other questions?
How long is the stay typically?
Which was-
How long is the stay?
It's a couple weeks.
Two weeks.
Two weeks, yeah.
Okay. And that's the same on both ends?
It is. They're a little shorter on this side because they, the last two days, they go to San Francisco. Apparently, San Francisco's more exciting than Pocatello, I hope. And so-
They actually have a, they actually have a, a committee or a group in San Francisco that's from Hokkaido. And so, they host these kids for a dinner one night, and then they leave. They tour San Francisco one day, and then they leave the next. Their stay's usually shorter here because they have three-week summer vacation, and they spend two weeks of it traveling in with us. So that's, that kind of limits them as well, so.
We're thinking of Tokyo. We're gonna go to Tokyo. Last couple of days. Just, just-
Hang out.
Just 'cause.
You mentioned that they enjoy San Francisco, but I can tell you from my experience with them last year, they love Pocatello.
They do.
When it comes time for them to have their farewell ice cream social-
Exactly.
They're crying, and they're so sad to leave. They love it here.
And it's the same on the other end. Our kids laugh when we say, "You're just gonna be sad when you leave." They laugh, and, but same scenario on the other end, lots of tears and sadness.
Yeah, but it is truly a great program, and it really impacts the people who are able to participate in this. I mean, it's something that for their whole life, they're going to remember.
And you'd be surprised how many of these delegates end up going back to Japan, working on the jet program, or some we know that are actually in businesses, working in businesses over there. So it does impact these, you know, for future.
Yeah, definitely. And I just think that the committee does a phenomenal job. I mean, they not only have their monthly meetings they attend, but they do a lot behind the scenes, you know, coordinating all of the activities and finding the host families and getting everything ready to go. So they really, you guys need to be commended for that.
Thank you.
It's a lot of work, and-
And enjoyment.
But we do, it's quite rewarding. And I will say, a lot of the crying is, is that host family stay. They get really attached to-
That's where the attachment is.
The, the host families, and it's a relationship, it's a lifetime relationship. I still stay in contact with, with kids that I've hosted, you know, and, and it's, you know, they're, they become stepchildren, you know, Japanese stepchildren.
My daughter went in 2001, and her host family's been my host family every time I've gone over, and it may be at least every two weeks, we're in contact. We, it's just, it's been a continuum since 2001. So, and a lot of the other delegates do the same thing. It's just a, a great program. And I have actu, well, I have a second host family there as well. They kind of split me sometimes, a week at each home. And I've actually hosted everybody, all their children and the moms. I'm working on the dads now to get them over here. So, it doesn't just stop when, when we come home. It, it keeps going. And we thank all of you for your support of our program as well.
This is not just an all-feel-good program either, though. I mean, this teaches diplomacy to these young people, and, and it helps them become better adults. And, in my personal opinion especially, this is one of the best youth programs right now out there. Because, I mean, you're really having to do, make some adult decisions to, to make this program work, and, and then on top of that, experiencing a, a different culture and, and having the opportunities that we have to experience, you know, travel. You know, it's a, it's a good program, so.
Any comments on this side?
I think the opportunity is fantastic for the student, for, you know, young youth population in Pocatello. And you guys are doing a fantastic job. And there's so much learning when you, not just the language, the culture, and then just being able to go to Japan and take part and live in that culture. It's a big deal. It's an opportunity that a lot of these kids probably won't have if this program wasn't there. So, great job.
It's a big deal. It's, it's different than a, than an exchange program for a student. Because you're going as a group, they're having a parade for you. I mean, it's, it's different over there. But it, it, you probably aren't engulfed in the, in the language as much. It's, it's a little different experience as, as for that, as far as that goes, but.
Sounds great. Thank you.
I have, I have a concern, a couple of things that, that I just thought I'd address the city council quickly. This is a youth program. We currently have one chaperone that goes with the kids with the latest. And concerns with youth programs, the city council might want to consider a two-chaperone program, so we can, you know, make sure that everything is appropriate. Not that anyone on that committee I would ever expect to be a problem, but, but there's always, you know, stipulations that may come up that need to be dealt with. And that would, that would require a, a budget adjustment, though. That's another $2,500 for a ticket going over. And we typically pay the chaperones out of our budget, chaperones' travel out of our budget. But if you guys could maybe think through that, give us some ideas, give us some direction, that'd be helpful. That's one concern that I've had with the program. We need to, we need to do something about it.
Too deep leadership is a little leadership logical.
Right. With, especially with, with the latest problems that-
With COVID.
Our nation. Joan, Joan's awesome. And honestly, I wouldn't wanna, I wouldn't wanna meet her in a dark alley somewhere.
Look out.
But those kind of things are a concern, you know, when you're traveling. When I, when I went over, I, we got, we got kicked off a plane, and we sat in a-
Had a mess.
We had a mess. We sat in an airport for three hours-
And then getting them over to Japan and back safe. And then it's a lifetime, it's a life-changing experience for a lot of these young people. Other things that we focus, we've tried to focus, or some of our goals are is we, this year, we're going to be establishing the 2019 delegation. So that process is going to be starting shortly. And of course, find more money for the program. The program's cash starving. We typically have a budget set up. We spend about $850 in food and about 500 in fuel, about 800 in activities that we provide for these Japanese delegates. Airfare alone is about 22,000 for us per year. That's including the delegates and the chaperone that are going. And so that's our, by far, biggest expense that we have to come up with. We do have a small advertising budget of about $200 that we've set aside for particularly this year because we were developing some posters and those kind of things. But the city gives us about $2,500 a year, at least that's what they said they were going to do for us last year, coming up this next year. So it's about a $22,000 deficit that we have to come up with as far as fundraising. A lot of that's done by our delegates. They go out and fundraise and do things, do things to raise money for them to be able to go to Japan. And that's also discussed in the Wednesday meeting every week. And the parents of the delegates are the fundraising, we're supposed to be the fundraising committee. It doesn't always, you know, happen that way, but we, that's the way it's supposed to, supposed to run. And so we're constantly trying to find more money for the program, simply because it just is really expensive to, you know, travel is quite expensive for these young people. But is there any directions that we?
Questions, comments?
How many people on your committee?
I think we have 14 currently.
Is it full?
It is, I think it is full.
But we have two that will be...
Yeah, we got a couple that are gonna, a couple spaces that are gonna come.
Vacant.
Vacant soon.
Are those going to be easy to fill?
What's that?
Are those going to be easy to fill?
Sometimes they are.
I think, we have one that is interested right now.
Yeah, we do have, there was a time about a year ago where we were very, very slim. We had eight, I think, seven, eight people.
Seven, eight of us trying to run the program.
Trying to run the program, but we've got a full committee now. So that's been nice. But at the same time, you, I mean, there's always gonna be a percentage that's absentee. They'll sign up and not, and not show up.
Don't show up.
And so we've got a few of those. So there's really probably, I would probably say, still seven and eight, seven or eight of us that are the bulk of the program. And then we've got some other ones coming up, trying to get them ready.
Any other questions?
How long is the stay typically? How long is the stay?
It's a couple of weeks.
Two weeks.
Two weeks, yeah.
Okay, and that's the same on both ends?
It is, they're a little shorter on this side because they, the last two days, they go to San Francisco. Apparently, San Francisco's more exciting than Pocatello.
No.
And so...
They actually have a, they actually have a committee or a group in San Francisco that's from Hokkaido. And so they host these kids for a dinner one night and then they leave. They tour San Francisco one day and then they leave the next. Their stays usually shorter here because they have three-week summer vacation and they spend two weeks of it traveling and with us. So that's, that kind of limits them as well, so.
We're thinking of Tokyo. We're gonna go to Tokyo, last couple of days. Just, just...
Just 'cause.
Hang out.
You mentioned that they enjoy San Francisco, but I can tell you from my experience with them last year, they love Pocatello.
They do.
When it comes time for them to have their farewell ice cream social.
Exactly.
They're crying and they're so sad to leave. They love it here.
And it's the same on the other end. Our kids laugh when we say, "You're just gonna be sad when you leave." They laugh, but same scenario on the other end, lots of tears and sadness.
Yeah, but it is truly a great program and it really impacts the people who are able to participate in this. I mean, it's something that for their whole life, they're going to remember.
And you'd be surprised how many of these delegates end up going back to Japan, working on the jet program, or some we know that are actually in businesses, working in businesses over there. So it does impact these, you know, for future.
Yeah, definitely. And I just think that the committee does a phenomenal job. I mean, they not only have their monthly meetings they attend, but they do a lot behind the scenes, you know, coordinating all of the activities and finding the host families and getting everything ready to go. So they really, you guys need to be commended for that.
Thank you.
It's a lot of work.
And enjoyment.
But we do, it's quite rewarding. And I will say, a lot of the crying is, is that host family stay. They get really attached to...
That's where the attachment is.
The host families and it's a relationship, it's a lifetime relationship. I still stay in contact with, with kids that I've hosted, you know, and, you know, they become stepchildren, you know, Japanese stepchildren.
My daughter went in 2001 and her host family's been my host family every time I've gone over. And it may be at least every two weeks, we're in contact. We, it's just, it's been a continuum since 2001, so. And a lot of the other delegates do the same thing. It's just a, a great program. And I have actually, well, I have a second host family there as well. They kind of split me sometimes, a week at each home. And I've actually hosted everybody, all their children and the moms. I'm working on the dads now to get them over here. So it doesn't just stop when, when we come home. It keeps going. And we thank all of you for your support of our program as well.
This is not just an all-feel-good program either, though. I mean, this teaches diplomacy to these young people. And it helps them become better adults. In my personal opinion especially, this is one of the best youth programs right now out there. Because, I mean, you're really having to do, make some adult decisions to, to make this program work. And, and then on top of that, experiencing a different culture and, and having the opportunities that we have to experience, you know, travel. It's a, it's a good program, so.
Any comments on this side?
I think the opportunity is fantastic for the student, for, you know, young youth population in Pocatello. And you guys are doing a fantastic job. And there's so much learning when you, not just the language, the culture, and then just being able to go to Japan and take part and live in that culture. It's a big deal. It's an opportunity that a lot of these kids probably won't have if this program wasn't there, so, great job.
It's a big deal. It's, it's different than a, than an exchange program for a student. Because you're going as a group, they're having a parade for you. I mean, it's, it's different over there. But it, it, you probably aren't engulfed in the, in the language as much. It's, it's a little different experience as, as for that, as far as that goes, but...
Sounds great. Thank you.
I have, I have a concern, a couple of things that, that I just thought I'd address the city council quickly. This is a youth program. We currently have one chaperone that goes with the kids. With the latest in concerns with youth programs, the city council might want to consider a two-chaperone program. So we can, you know, make sure that everything is appropriate. Not that anyone on that committee I would ever expect to be a problem, but, but there's always, you know, stipulations that may come up that need to be dealt with. And that would, that would require a budget adjustment, though. That's another $2,500 for a ticket going over. And we typically pay the chaperones out of our budget, chaperones' travel out of our budget. But if you guys could maybe think through that, give us some ideas, give us some direction, that'd be helpful. That's one concern that I've had with the program. We need to, we need to do something about it.
Too deep leadership is a little leadership logical.
Right, especially with, with the latest problems that...
With COVID.
Our nation. Joan, Joan's awesome. And honestly, I wouldn't want to, I wouldn't want to meet her in a dark alley somewhere.
Look out.
But those kind of things are a concern, you know, when you're traveling. When I, when I went over, I, we got, we got kicked off a plane and we sat in a...
Had a mess.
We had a mess. We sat in an airport for three hours. I'm up at the counter with her, you know. Fortunately, my wife came with us, so she was there. And the kids just sat there alone, you know, in Los Angeles, LA, you know. And we had armed police officers coming down and escorting someone out and everything. So I don't know, there's just probably some need for that, we need to upgrade. That's all we have. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
We'll just leave our updated brochure at here.
Yeah, you can review that if you'd like.
Super.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you. All right, we'll move on to agenda item number four, digital plans submitted and retention program, building department. The building department is requesting council consideration to allow budget authority to fund the purchase of hardware and software for proceeding, for processing building plans, missions electronically and storing plans in a digital format.
I want to see what Lynn does with this computer. Twice in one day, I hate that. Anyway, folks, we went through our budget preparation, our presentation to you. We had asked for $25,000 to purchase some hardware, mainly hardware, and some software to be able to start processing plans and plans submitted digitally. This has kind of grown since that original request, so we've got some other folks that are gonna want to weigh in on this and some decisions that are going to be needed, need to be made. Anyway, I contacted, I've been in communication with our IT department. And the $25,000 that we requested in our budget presentation meeting would basically cover the hardware that we need, the computer monitors, and there's some software out there that we think would probably work for the building department. Again, Chris is here to talk about the details of the equipment, but I think that we also have a couple of other departments since then that have decided they would like to get in on this as well and have some comment and possibly participate in, in the digital submitter process as well, so.
Would this speed up the process of people getting building permits? Is that what you're telling me?
Well, you know, my main goal on this was storage. You know, permanent record storage of plans, we get a lot of plans, we're, we're running out of space to store those plans. Plus, it's probably time for us to step up and move on into an electronic format. As far as speeding it up, yeah, if we have the right program out there, I think it would allow us to be able to have multiple people doing review at the same time. Presently, when we get a set of plans in, the plans go on a rack or a board. And each department may take that set of plans and take them into their office and, you know, they have busy schedules as well. That plan might be in there for a day or two days, and then it might shift to the next department. So, yeah, I, if we had the ability for multiple people to be able to review at the same time, it definitely would speed up the process.
And that could be done with $25,000?
Initially.
Okay.
The, the hardware is almost all of that cost. They're looking at Surface Studios, which is a 26-inch touchscreen monitor computer, very much like Mary's Surface that he has there, just in a very much larger desktop version of it. Allows, it's a touchscreen so that they can expand and shrink and move stuff. They can draw and they can annotate. The software they're looking at is just a single component of a much larger package. The component they're looking at will address the building department's requirements and needs, and it gets our foot in the door. If you buy the full-up version, you're talking a significant price increase. But it has a lot of capabilities that we don't need at this time. So we're kind of building this, using building blocks to get us into it. Everybody designs now digitally. Even the handful of architects still use paper and pencil to draw their plans, still convert those plans to a digital format when they submit them. We're behind the power curve on getting here. We should have been doing this years ago. But it, it puts us going down the right path. The four computers that we're looking at, Lynn's computers are probably due for replacement anyway. So about half of the cost would have been expended anyway just to replace and upgrade those computers. And we're just upgrading them with a much more significant quality computer that has a much greater capability and, and at about twice the cost. A Surface Studio runs about twice the price of what we pay for a standard desktop station. But again, you're talking a station that has a 26-inch monitor. It can also be laid down flat so that while they're annotating, drawing and stuff, they're working with a flat surface versus a, a surface that's perpendicular to their view.
So the $25,000 initial, what are you saying is going to happen after that?
The maintenance on the software, we're talking just literally a couple of thousand dollars. If you go with the full-up version, we're talking $200,000 down the road.
And 20% maintenance per year.
So...
But we don't see needing to go to that full-up version, but you potentially could.
So Chris, you just said if we go to the full-up version, it's $200,000 a year, is that correct?
No, $200,000 for the initial purchase and then maintenance for 20% of that.
All right, so...
And, yeah, that's a superior, it's not Superioron, it's a preferred vendor of Superioron, so it would work with our Navaline and Superioron system that we currently have in place.
So when you say we don't need all of the capabilities that it has, like what kinds of things are you talking about that we would not utilize?
Bert here, Bert is with the IT department. What, what this product is, it's actually called Project Dock is the name of it. It allows all departments to interface, and the way they're doing right now, permits and everything, it lets them go in. This is the new product, the big one. It lets them do everything that we currently do, except it's built into the system. There was one thing we didn't mention, that this current system, we're talking the $25,000, we would have to store this stuff on OnBase, and that's something separate. If we went to the new product, we would not have to do that. It'd be stored in Superioron database, which would help OnBase not be so overwhelmed. Basically, if, if we were doing planning view correctly, we could go to the new software. That's my opinion. This is a stepping stone to it. The product, the software they are using is about $3,000, but it's the same software that the new product uses inside this part of it. So we wouldn't be going backwards by purchasing this, we're moving forward, just a stepping stone. But it is more manual. You need to realize, a lot of the work will be double entry. They'll have to, to do it on there and then they'll still have to go into Superioron and Keyon also, unless we go to the new product, the full base, then it's all done in one spot. Did that answer your question?
Kind of, so kind of along with the question of speeding up the process, it sounds like if we wanted to do that, we would need to go with the full.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, this, this, this current, this small package that we're doing right here, yes, it takes care of the, the record management that we need to do. But putting it in OnBase, but see, once we go to the new software, we would no longer be putting it in OnBase. So that kind of cuts that off. And there is licensing and stuff in OnBase that we have to talk about that's minimal written, that that costs, we're talking a few thousand dollars maybe, but...
So the major issue is being able to store stuff, right?
That was initially what prompted me into going to the digital format, is to be able to store things. For example, when we, when we were doing the Hoku project, I probably had a stack of plans 10-foot long and four-foot high of tightly rolled plans. That was the hard copies of those. On that particular project, we, at the end of the project, we asked them to furnish us a digital copy of that. So then we have that full set on a thumb drive versus trying to store all that. That's what initially instituted my request for, for this. However, you know, being able to go in the field and along with this hardware, the, the large monitors, we're also looking at the smaller laptop or some type of a tablet that we could also put those plans on temporarily. So then when we're doing inspections, we can go into the field, not have this big roll of plans with us, scroll through what we need to see on laptop or...
So is the plan to convert existing hard copy and there won't be any conversion of that?
Yeah, and on our budget presentation, I gave you one picture, a photograph of the upstairs in our storage room. And to try to convert all of those over to a digital format would be a daunting task.
Okay. Another question. I have friends who have worked in different industries and they're a little bit concerned about the history of storage, because there isn't that long a history in the digital format.
Yeah.
Will, has that improved to where we know 60 years, 80 years from now, that we can access these plans?
As fast as technology's going, I think that's, I would hesitate to even make a guess.
Well, but I'm saying that there's...
These gentlemen might have a better feeling.
There has been some question about how long you can store stuff digitally with some of the stuff, because that's not been...
The, the format issue, where it was constantly changing formats, is pretty much no longer an issue. They have so much standardized on the PDF format that it allows you to continue to bring these things forward and keep them there. Yeah, depending on where you store it, you always have, have that potential issue. Try to find a machine today that will read a three-and-a-half inch disc, or even worse, a five-and-quarter inch disc. Try to find, try to find a microfiche reader that, that you can read a microfiche with, a microtalon reader. You, you constantly face this challenge. But to constantly sit back and say, oh, we're not going to go forward because the technology is moving so fast, that just sets you back further and further.
So would we have...
The software we're looking at is actually utilized by the city of Boise.
Well, some of us don't think that's looking ahead.
But you, but you gotta keep going forward. Sometimes that means as this technology advances and you look back and you say, okay, this technology is about to be completely superseded, then you have to do that transfer and update it and bring it forward. Just like when you had three-and-a-half inch disc and five-and-quarter inch disc, you had to move them to a hard drive in order to keep them readable and usable. As older hard drives die and the technology is behind and driving them, you may have to take that data and do a transfer and bring it forward. But as long as you stay proactive on that, you shouldn't lose any data.
So there will probably be a day when we will need to transfer what we have in hard copy to digital. I mean, that's what all industry's doing. So, I mean, when we take this step, we're also taking a step towards a time, you know, it might be 10 years down the road or more, but we're gonna have to convert that storage to digital.
When you stay with paper copies and hard copies, you run a risk. You run a risk of fire, you run a risk of flood, you run a risk of insects. It's the same with personal digital...
Making roughs.
If you have personal family photos and you're living with them in the paper format, you're running an extreme risk of them fading and stuff. Whereas if you get digitized and converted, you at least have them stored in another media that potentially could be safe for, as, as long as any of us are gonna be concerned.
So, but you're talking about storage on premises, correct?
Not necessarily. For example, we back up, all of our stuff right now is backed off, off premises.
It was this week?
I don't think our OnBase is being backed up off-site. I'm not sure where their backup is. But our network servers and stuff are all backed up and stored in, or I'm sorry, Pleasant Grove down in Utah.
Single site?
They have a single, our primary backup goes to Pleasant Grove. I think they have, the company that we back up with has a redundant site that they then in turn do, do a double backup with. Superioron backs up, right now, we back up onto tape and we store off-site, locally off-site, I'm not confident with that. We'll continue, we'll continue to bring you solutions for Superioron. We're looking, we're actually starting now to consider the cloud as our solution there, which would give us a, a two-tier backup site with Superioron.
The idea.
I think, I think we need to really get involved with this, but I don't want us to take a short step if a long step is going to be needed to stay...
Just to address what you're talking about, we have other departments here that want in on this. It'll cost another 25 for them. So we're really talking 50,000 even for the short step right now, to involve the whole planning and engineering and building, so.
But there might be some ways to reduce those costs too, by doing a, a common workstation, one or two common workstations versus four or five workstations.
And it is 165 to 200,000 range that we're talking. The equipment might be part of that, so it might bring it down. I've got a, they're giving us a bid right now in the process of it, but they, they said it wouldn't be over 200,000, so we know that's the high. But I'm thinking it's more like 165,000 for the department. Being in the business for a while here, I believe that after reviewing all this, the big picture is to do this every time first, I mean with it. But budgets, you've gotta do what you gotta do. And it's good to get the equipment out there, but I don't want to leave the other departments behind either, so.
Mr. Mayor, if we do the short step, and I think you said this, but I just want to clarify, if, if we did the short step and then eventually did the full software and, and went all the way, that short step cost, you said, is not wasted? Like, we're not duplic, we're not spending more that way? Or are we?
No. Well, there might be $3,000 in software purchasing now.
Okay.
They do use the same software, but whether we can use the same one that we purchased is what they're using in, in the Superioron product. There might be $3,000 that we have wasted, I guess is what they're looking for. But in the whole picture, about 200,000, that's pennies, but it's still taxable.
Waste is not a good...
Yeah.
It's a, it's a sunk cost.
Right.
That you'll move forward with. The data, the soft, the data that you put in as you convert the plans and you put it into the software, that data will be compatible with going forward. So when you get the full package, you won't have to do a reconversion or anything. It's already in the format that this we're recognizing.
And that's what I'm looking at, it's just that that money is not lost.
Yeah, there, there might be a sunk cost of those 3,000, because most of the cost that Lynn is looking at right now is a hardware cost. The, the four Surface Studios, four Surface Pros, that pretty much eats up that 25,000. That's about 22,000, the $25,000 that you have to pull. And the, the other departments, as they want to move forward, the Surface Studios run about $3,500 of these. So if they want to get on board with this, they would have to get a Surface Studio and depending on how they want to function stuff, additional Surface Pros, the small laptops. But most of the departments are going to those anyways.
If we went with the 200,000, will that include all the departments that want to be part of it, or will that make it more?
Well, it would cover the software end of the department.
The software end, they have not identified how much of it is hardware, software and 200,000, so I'm waiting for that to come in through the mail.
What departments would be able to...
We're talking planning, planning department, engineering department, fire department. Outside state, outside areas would come here and use a stationary station that's located in engineering planning area. We've already reviewed that. We only need four machines to take care of the rest of the city.
In addition to...
In addition to his four, that he's asking for.
14,000, 15,000 dollars.
Yeah. So he's asking for 25, and so that covers that. It's about 25 more to do the stepping stone for hardware and the, the small software package. And that equipment is the same equipment we would use in the next package, so.
So we would need to budget 50,000 now to keep going.
And I, I did talk to Ashley and she can address that, that there's probably the funds there, but that's rare enough.
Is the PDF format the right format for what everybody's submitting, can submit stuff in?
Yes. And if, if, one other point I'd like to add here, you know, we've got a lot of folks who come in with very small projects, small plans. When we ask for that, what we have planned on being able to do is we would scan those for them, the homeowner, the guy that's coming in with a deck, things like that, instead of having them have to go through the process of forgiving and digitize, we would scan that. We would scan that, four of them, take their paper copy and scan it forms, as long as it's, you know, a size that we have the ability to, to deal with conveniently.
And, I'm sorry, how far down the road do you see us going to the bigger software, the bigger platform?
Hopefully before I retire.
Ideally.
And after I retire.
Um, I would expect two years at the max, I wouldn't go beyond that. That's my opinion, but I think we should budget for next year, but the budget has to tell us what to do there, so.
If we were prepared to, in order to not have redundancy and dual entry and streamline and make it easier for applicants, make it easier for, you know, the departments, if we're prepared to do the software soon and later, are we prepared as a city to do that? Or do we really need to start with this baby step to phase in?
We are prepared to do that. This, the new, the new product, the Project Dock interfaces with Superiorion, we, we brought them in years ago and looked at the product and it was wonderful, but we didn't think we could afford it. I'm thinking we're at the point we can't afford not to do it to keep us electronically in the world, so we're, we're doing everything on, on the computer instead of putting it up in a cupboard somewhere, so I think we need to be moving towards that sooner than later.
Counsel, I might just add, if you wanna do something like this, I don't know that I'd necessarily budget into next year. There is some capital contingency funds that I would probably suggest we move forward if, regardless if you did the $25,000 fix or the $200,000 fix, I think there's that capital contingency that if we're gonna do it, you may as well do it, so.
I think you have three options on board right now. You have just do building department for the $25,000. Do building with the other departments at, at the baby step at $50,000, or you give us the go-ahead and say do it all, and you plan on about a $200,000 bill to pull it off.
It would be interesting if you're just getting bids now to find out what that really looked like opposed to a wild guess out there. We pulled 200,000 out of the sky, but it sounds like it might be 160.
165.
Sounds like it might be 200. Oftentimes, my experience is it goes from 200, not down to 160, but to 260, and so it might be interesting to find out what it really truly is.
I agree.
Yes.
You know, but I think it's, I, I'm feeling like the council's interested in knowing what that number is and, and moving forward with it if, if it's reasonable.
We could stage it, we could do this immediate thing this year and frame the next into capital contingency next year, which we're not that far away from.
Yeah. I mean, we're talking up to October.
But if you've got a last one- And then make everybody learn another one, is it better to just do it now?
Well, the hardware we can do now and not, and not do the software until we make a decision.
So, so to Councilman Bray's point though, what, how long is this getting, what are we looking at time rate? We're at the end of June right now, we're in the middle of June, we've got to be forward to Oc- October 1. It's gotta happen before then if it's this year. Well, how fast are we moving on this? Is it-
Two months, is it? The large package? If it's a large package, it takes a couple months for them to implement, so, and I don't know what their time schedule is of being available.
So maybe we have a couple questions. What's it really gonna cost? Instead of just an idea, I mean, I think it's a pretty good educated idea, but what's it really gonna cost and what's the timeframe of implementation? Because this will need to come in front of the council again and we'll have to have a, for approval, we'll have to have the, the, the exact cost and, and by the time it can happen, it will be, be July, the first part of July.
All right. I will have both of those within a week.
Okay.
Last of course.
That would be probably the route I would recommend we take, counsel. And then if, if it's doable, then the question comes if it's doable before October, we can have that discussion. If it's gonna be a next year, if we just plan it into next year's contingency as well, so. So I think that-
I think that's the approach to take. Thank you.
And are we okay with that? Okay, so.
Are we okay with the discussion later of getting the hardware one way or the other before October? I think that's a positive.
I, I think so, I think so, yeah, but I don't think it's gonna take three months to get the hardware, it doesn't sound like so, in, in July or-
No, that's doable.
When you have that, those numbers and when we have, when we have the numbers, then we can, we can make a decision on that, but I think that, yeah, you could get the hardware this year, I would think.
Excuse me, Mayor, would you suggest that we do that with the capital contingency or go ahead and put it in the building department's budget for the hardware?
I would put it in the capital contingency. It's a one-time fee and a one-time cost, and that's where I would take it from.
So do you want us to go back to another study session or just get all the numbers and all the paperwork and come back to a regular session?
Are we gonna have a clarification meeting or are we still having that council for budget?
Those are councils for the budget.
Budget meeting on the 28th.
28th, oh yeah, we do have a budget meeting on the 28th, so if you have, of June, do we have a budget meeting on 28th?
Yes.
So we have a budget meeting on the 28th, it would be-
It's a tax deduction.
It would be, it would be good to have that information at that point and then we can kind of give some direction.
Okay.
Okay, super. Great. All right, thank you. We'll move on to agenda item number five, is proposed childcare code chapter 5.28 changes. The police department is requesting council consideration to change city code chapter 5.28 childcare, section 5.28.030H, license requirement, 5.28.060BC and D, background checks, 5.28.110H, safety sleep, and 5.28.130B, training requirements.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. Rich Deal, Deputy City Attorney, Legal Department.
Janine Perman, licensing with the Pocatello Police.
Judy Born with Idaho Stars, Childcare Research in Lakeview.
And I'm Kathy Gates, I'm Childcare Health Consultant with Idaho Stars Region 6.
Thank you, ladies. We're here in front of the council today to get guidance. Kathy will be talking about some changes that are coming down regarding safe sleep. What we're, in broad strokes, our current ordinance, it would, from our perspective, needs to be amended, so we're here to present you with possibly ideas for those amendments so that our ordinance is in line with state and federal regulations. At this point, I'll just, I'll just turn it over to Kathy.
Thank you. My background is I'm a registered nurse. All of my years of working as a nurse has been in pediatric practice, pediatric in an office setting, pediatrics on a hospital floor, and then most of all NICU is what my background is, just to let you know where I'm coming from with this. In this last legislative session that Idaho had, there was a new law that was passed that will be directly affecting childcare facilities in the state of Idaho that accept ICCP funding. And what this is, is for safe sleep, and some of you may not be familiar with that term, but if you think back, back in the 90s, there was a big push for back to sleep. It was a back to sleep campaign, and that's where we encouraged parents to put their babies on their back for sleep time instead of on their tummies because we had, in this country, had thousands of babies die from sudden infant death syndrome in a year, and the numbers kept growing. And so through research, through the American Academy of Pediatrics, the National Institutes of Health, also CDC was involved with that, they did some research and found that it was safer, a safer practice for the babies to be put on their backs for sleep time. So in the 1990s, that was implemented, and there was a 60% decrease in the SIDS rates. So it did work, but then what happened is in the 2000s, we saw that there was kind of a plateau. We were still having thousands of babies die each year from SIDS, and they have discovered that it is from some non-position related things such as suffocation, entrapment, strangulation. And so with that, they have made some changes. Now, instead of calling it back to sleep, it's called safe to sleep. And the changes with that, we still want the babies to be placed on their back because that is the safest, safest position for babies to sleep, but now there are also recommendations that you don't have any objects in the bed with these infants. You don't even have a blanket in there. And the reason for that is because that's where you're coming in with the deaths from strangulation, suffocation, and entrapment. So what the guidelines are now is to have what a safe sleep environment looks like. I don't know if you can see, I've actually brought some booklets, and so you'll all be getting this, but this is the new environment for safe sleep. You can see that it is just one baby on a firm mattress with a tight-fitting sheet with no bumper pads, no blankets, no stuffed animals, nothing hanging over the bed like mobiles or anything, because this is where we are trying to avoid the suffocation, the entrapment, and the strangulation that is causing some of the children in this country to die from naptime and from sleep time at nighttime. So that is the push, and that is why the Idaho legislative session voted, the House and the Senate both passed this, it will go into effect July 1st. And so with the ICCP providers who are providing care for our children in the state of Idaho, they will be under these new guidelines. So when the health inspector goes out, that's what they will be looking for, is that everyone is practicing a safe sleep environment, because our goal is to cut down on the number of sudden infant deaths that are occurring in this country. It was great that, you know, we made the switch from tummy sleeping to back to sleep, but we were still having deaths, and so our goal is to try to decrease those numbers of deaths so that we can make sure that we're keeping our children as safe as possible. One other thing that is going to be a change with the childcare settings, a lot of providers were letting children sleep in swings, they were letting them sleep in bouncy chairs, they were keeping them, if a child was brought into the facility in a car seat, they stayed in their car seat to finish up their nap, and then they were taken out of the car seat. That will not be allowed under this new law any longer. A child will have to be, if they go to sleep in, in one of those items like a swing or a car seat, they need to be removed from that and put into a bed immediately. The crib needs to be one that is approved by the Consumer Safety Commission, and so we want to make sure that the cribs, you can use pack and play, you can use a playpen, but it needs to be something that is approved, it is manufactured since 2012. You need to have a mattress that will be designed for that particular crib. One thing that has caused some deaths from entrapment is if you use a mattress that's too small for the device that the child is sleeping in, then they can get their head caught down in there and then they could die from entrapment, suffocation. We don't want any blankets in the bed, on the bed, because again, if a blanket is placed over a crib, like to shield it from light or whatever, then that blanket could fall down over the baby's mouth and nose, and that could be a suffocation issue. So that's the reason for not having that. Babies will be allowed to have pacifiers, but we don't want them to have the string that clips onto their clothing because again, that could be a choking hazard, that could be a strangulation hazard if that string got wrapped around their neck. So a pacifier will be allowed. We are encouraging providers, if the child is not old enough to know how to turn back and forth from tummy to back, back to tummy, we're asking them, when the child goes to sleep, if they accidentally flip themselves over and the provider knows that that child is not capable of flipping themselves back over, that the provider gets up and places that child back on their back. Once the child has the developmental skills to rotate both directions, then they're fine. We encourage putting them on their back for sleep, but if they rotate back over to their tummy again, then that's okay because that child can flip themselves over. The thing that we have to take into consideration is that on child's developmental milestones, what their skill sets are. The reason for not wanting the children to be in swings or in car seats is because their airway is so small. In fact, in the, working in the NICU, if we have an emergency and we're looking to intubate a baby quickly, we usually look at the size of their little finger because that's the size of their airway. So you're not working with much of an airway to begin with, it's pretty small, and if you're sitting up in a swing or in a bouncy seat sleeping and your head falls over like this, you're already compromising that airway, which is not very big to be with. So that's the reason why we want to get these providers in the habit of getting the children out of whatever they have, have fallen to sleep in and then put them on their back in a crib, so. Do you have any questions for me?
I do.
Yes.
And maybe this is not a very intelligent question, but are there, since you're not allowing blankets anymore, or we're not allowing blankets anymore, are there requirements about temperature settings? I mean, are there issues with that?
Yes, we do have environmental temperature recommendations that are available, and this is one of our guidelines that we use. It's called caring for our children. It covers a wide variety of topics, and there are guidelines, temperature guidelines in here. And one thing that we are encouraging providers to do, I don't know if any of you are familiar with it, but there is a thing called sleep sacks. I have pictures of some here, and actually hospitals are even starting to use these. It works the same as a blanket, but you can see here how that the child fits into it and then it's secured, so it does not work up to where it covers the nose and the mouth. And this one particularly even swaddles, so if you're having an infant that likes to be swaddled in a blanket, this takes the place of that, but it's much more safe than a blanket because it's not gonna work up and get over the child's nose and mouth. And we recommend, you can swaddle a baby up to about three months of age, but then once they start trying to turn over, they need their hands to help them to flip back over again. And so at that point, you go to a sleep sack that has, it's sleeveless, and then if they have a onesie on and their arms are still covered with fabric so that they will stay warm, but they have their hands free so that they can flip themselves back over again if they're learning how to do that. So that's, that's a very good question, it's a very reasonable question, because it seems, it seems like it's really cold and like, oh, you know, you want a blanket, and we're still letting a baby be wrapped in a blanket to, to be held and rocked, but then once they go to sleep, we encourage the provider to put the baby on their, their back in the crib and remove the blanket. And so the sleep sack is a good alternative to a blanket if you have a child that is accustomed to being wrapped up and swaddled in a blanket.
Is there a particular age that they would transition to, back to having a regular blanket?
Yes.
Or not back to, but having a-
The long goes up to 12 months of age. So once the child has passed that first birthday, then they are able to have a blanket.
Okay. Thank you.
You had some pretty dramatic SIDS death statistics. Are those statewide or are those just in childcare centers?
Those are, those are for the United States everywhere, not just in childcare centers. But those are really high numbers, and that's why we have made all of this push to try to find out what is going on. Also, I will mention that research has shown that there are some ethnicity backgrounds that make children more susceptible to SIDS, and one of those is Native Americans, which in Region 6, we have a lot of Native American children, and so those children are at a higher risk. No one knows exactly why, but they and Alaska natives are the two most highest-risk children. The third group are your African-Americans. So that's one thing, when I go to facilities, I always tell them, if you have a Native American child in your care, you have to have eyes on those children. Statistically, SIDS occurs in the first 12 months with the first six months being the highest rate. 90% of all SIDS occurs in the first six months.
Questions, counsel?
Oh, and Judy did ask me to mention this, and this is a good thing to point out. If a child has been used to the back to sleep at home and then they are currently enrolled in the childcare in their new setting, if they come and the childcare provider puts them on their tummy, then that is a 75% increase risk that the child will have a SIDS event. It's called unaccustomed tummy sleeping.
Any other questions, counsel? Okay.
Thank you, Kathy. As Kathy indicated, to receive ICCP funding, just so you, the council's aware, about 70% of the licensed providers in the city of Pocatello receive ICCP. But the ones that do not tend to be daycares, but, so 70% of licensed establishments in Pocatello receive ICCP money. Thereby, for them to continue receiving that funding, they're gonna have to comply with these regulations. What we're proposing and getting guidance from the council is to bring our ordinance, because we are one of, I think, six or seven cities in the state of Idaho that has our own ordinance regarding childcare. And basically, we have to be at a minimum of what the state requires, and we can be a little more stringent than the state, but at, at, at the base, we have to dovetail, if you will, with what state regulations are. So that's why we're here to propose and get your guidance regarding some code amendments. There is a safe sleep. On that first page, disaster plan, you have a compu of this. This is provided by Idaho Stars. This is coming from- This is coming from state and federal regulations, as well as the next point being the background checks. It's much broader than what we're doing. And then again, application process and training. We did have a waiver period, we do have a waiver period in our ordinance regarding during the application process. State law is not going to allow us to do that. And then as to the training, there's a little bit of an increase in the required training for a daycare or childcare provider. It's pretty simple. We just would like to have, we, and from my estimation and from in Tacoma, Janay and other, other cities, we have a darn good ordinance for childcare here in Pocatello. But with the federal and state mandates, we have to amend it. And that's why we're here, seek your guidance.
Do it.
So, so my little two senses is that, so what's happening is, is the federal government is saying 70% of your childcare providers are going to be covered as far as this safe sleep piece. It's the 30% that is not required because they're not using ICP that you have to protect. So we need that rule in the guide for that 30% of the providers so that they all follow the same guideline.
If we implement the background check and stuff, will we have to charge higher fees if we're doing FBI background, if I'm reading this right?
Yes, and, and that's one of the changes is, and we, Janay and I have been discussing it, the way it works now is you're, I'm a new applicant, I walk in and I have to pay $80. And when I go for renewal, and if I get in 30 days early, I pay $40 if I'm within 30 days of my expiration. With the new federal guidelines, when I, I pay my $80 year one, when I go for renewal in year two, I got to pay $80 again because of the requirement of the FBI background check and, and the broader checks. There's some-
So year one, we're going to pay that $80 fee for the broader background checks, okay? So within year one through four, you're not going to have to pay that broader background check, you're going to pay that $40. But in year five, we're going to start you over again, shall we say, and do the background check again. What that basically does is tell that if you've gone to a different state or lived somewhere else, in that meantime, we're doing that full background check again.
That's every childcare worker.
Correct. And that's a federal mandate.
And they pay for themselves, right?
It varies. Some facilities pay for their employees, some facilities require their employees to pay. And so it really just varies on the facilities.
And we'll be able to accomplish that background check at the same rate? That's my question. Because it's much more comprehensive than what we do right now.
Correct. So there is a timely, or a timeframe the federal mandate requires, and that's within 45 days. So, I mean, yes, we, we will accomplish it in the same amount of time.
No, I'm saying for the same amount.
Dollar amount.
Oh, the 50?
If we have to go to other resources, it looks like there'd be added costs.
So the, the original background check that you do is what the federal government is requiring.
Okay.
So then, the federal government is requiring a complete full background check like that every five years. So either the city implements it as happening or they will have to take and give, plus a city and a federal background check at the same time. So we're just asking you to switch it so that every five years, they do that full background check rather than doing two on the fifth year.
Well, I guess my question, when I look at this, it says current state or residence, and there's like six highlighted areas there. And when we look at previous, which I would take as what we have, there's three. If I'm going to have to go to an FBI fingerprint background check, a national crime information center, a national sex offender registry, that's far different than the state criminal history, the state sex offender, and the state child abuse.
Okay, and it may be the way that this is lined up. So when you're looking at initial applicant, or application requirement, you're looking at what current state you reside in, and then you're looking at for the past five years is what we're also checking where you've lived. Does that make sense?
So that's currently happening right now?
That's currently happening. So the difference, the difference in our checks basically are going to be that if you've lived somewhere else, we currently aren't checking that in-state sex offender registry and the child abuse registry for that state you've lived. Does that make sense? That's where the difference comes in for what we're currently checking and what it will be required.
And my question is, when you have to go to other resources, will you not be putting in more effort and more cost?
Potentially, yes. And that's, and we would be, we're going to, what we're looking at is that we already have a current fee resolution for this. We would probably be back in front of the council at the fee resolution time. We, we're looking at it, if we pass the ordinance, we're going to study it over the next remainder of the year. And what it marches, when the fee resolution generally comes before the council and toto all the, all the different fees. And look at it at that point and see if we do need to adjust the fees. Is, potentially, yes. To answer your question, yes, we're going to have more, we're going to spend more time researching these individuals. And I guess, you know, and that's unfortunate to some degree, but at the same time, you get back to the point where we're looking to try and protect and serve children.
Well, I don't have a problem with it.
But no, your points, we'll take it. We will, there will probably be an increased cost. We don't, what that cost is, that we would, and we're not here to make money, we're here just to cover our costs.
But we've had to address the costs in my short tenure, the last five years, I think we had to really raise it because the costs were so much from the state.
Mm-hmm.
And if those costs are from the state, then I would think they would go up other places too. I just-
Are we too late to adjust the fee for this?
I don't think we are.
Well, no, we could, we could, I'd have to talk to the finance department about coordinating that, but that's something very possible we could do. But normally, you know, as opposed to, because doing a fee resolution, does a little bit, but not too much work.
Sure. With, with the fees, we do not approve next year's fees until August, late August. It would look like we would have time to study this and be proactive and be able to put that in for our August, our first meeting in August is when we have our public hearing on fees and budget. And so, you know, we've got roughly six weeks to figure out if it's going to cost us more.
How long is it going to take you to redo the ordinance, childcare ordinance?
We could probably be ready to launch second meeting in July. We could have it prepared, drafted for your consideration.
So in four weeks, you can have this ready for us to go and-
Yes.
And do, and then, and then at that time, we would know what the fees, those potential fees are.
Presumably, yes. We could look, we will find out the best we can. But yes, we can have the ordinance ready to go for the second, for council consideration in second meeting in July.
So when we implement the ordinance, this is a theoretical question, if there's change, and we say that you now need to have this background check versus the one you come in under, are we going to require people to go through a second background check? Because our law requires that they-
Right. And we've been discussing that, and I think that while, as opposed to having, we pass the ordinance and we're not going to have all the providers come down to City Hall at one time, we're going to catch them as they renew. That's, we've gotten guidance from the state, they're okay with that kind of rollover. So if they're currently valid and they come up for renewal in-
October, November.
April of 19, then we would do it. For now, we're, we just, we've thought about the logistics of it. What do you have, we have 43 facilities, 13 are non-ICCP. So basically, we have 55, 60 facilities in the city of Pocatello that we license. I just can't see us trying to, well, check every background all at one time. We're just going to go roll it through as they come up for renewal and we'll address that.
So theoretically, once we put the ordinance in, then a year from then, everybody would need to be licensed according to that ordinance.
Well, we have caught everybody, yes.
Theoretically, yeah.
Okay. We okay moving forward with this and bringing it?
The only question I have, Mr. Mayor, is whether or not increased costs are going to drive more people into the black market. In other words, unlicensed facilities. And do we have any concern about that?
We do have a concern with it, but that's just the reality of the world, Councilman. I mean, I understand your point is well taken, but I think we are not, and us, we are charging in our fees what costs the, what the FBI is charging us. I mean, it's not that, you know, and your point's well taken, yes, there is that potential and it is a concern, but at the same time, it's, we're going to try and catch as many as we can to keep everybody safe, but it, it may happen. And it's probably going on now, we don't know it.
I'm really concerned for these little people that no one is a spokesman for. Very concerned there. But wow. Well, this is big time. And it's going to be a real change, I think, for many people, some of the regulations.
Well, and, but be cognizant of the fact that 70% of our licensed providers are going to be doing this regardless. Because if they don't, they lose their ICP funding, which is really, if you will, a cornerstone of why they're in operation. Because they're getting that state federal money to help afraid the cost of putting their child in childcare.
Why are the other 30% not funded that program?
A percentage of that are preschools. Preschools do not qualify for state funding. The other half of, I would say, the 13, I've spoken with providers, some of which don't, I mean, you can't be ICP refund, receiving the money if you don't have a child at the facility that receives the money. So that's probably where the other six, seven facilities fit into that.
And there's a couple that choose not to take the state funding because they feel like there's an issue with payments and being completed properly. One of the things that you have to remember is the background check isn't a choice. This is a federal mandate that every childcare provider have this done. So that's not just ICP families, that's going to be-
Whether they're licensed or not.
Background, background checks. Then the back to sleep is an ICP choice, or a city choice, because it's an ICP mandate. So you have to look at those two different regulations, whether the federal government says you have to do it, and whether ICP says you have to do it, and whether the city chooses to incorporate those. So the background checks are federal, you don't get to choose that, that's a requirement. The backer, the back to sleep, safe sleep choice is whether you want to protect your other 30% of the children that are in there.
Well, and part of, big, big part of this is going to be education too. And every time there's a change, then the, the public as a whole is educated about these changes. And it probably brings greater scrutiny on those that fly under the radar.
We hope so.
Because it exposes them to not being regulated and not being necessarily conforming to best practices.
I mean, and our thing is, is we want to protect the children. And we would like every place that chooses to watch children be licensed and follow the guidelines. And when we find out that we have somebody that isn't, you know, JNA goes in, talks to them, and, you know, we work on getting them licensed and up to par so that they do the right thing. But it definitely is educating the parents, understanding what is required of childcare providers.
Are those 30%, are they the small providers?
No. We have, we have, you have a large facility here that has chose not to take ICP because they don't like the training requirements. They do the training themselves, they, it's not that they don't do training, it's just they choose, that their number of ICP children versus the amount they would have to pay their employees to make sure that the training is completed for the federal requirement is too much of a cost for them at this time.
On the issue of education, educating the public, when we pass an ordinance for this, when, or do you have a plan to educate the public?
We have plans in place right now. We have an Idaho Stars website, a Facebook page, and we put that information out. We have been working for the last year on educating people about the safe sleep practices and making sure that they understand what those rules are coming into place starting July 1, when their inspections are going to be happening. And we've been doing a lot about what, what is a quality childcare environment and what we should be doing and-
And all the safe sleep requirements are part of all the-
Yes.
I've held several classes in Region 6 and Region 7 with the providers, telling them, you know, what the law entails and the reason for it. Because I think with the providers and parents alike, they just need more information. Once you understand why this law is in place and what it does for your, the protection of your children, then it's much easier to get people on board. I've used the analogy of, I can remember I was five when our family got the first card that had seat belts in it. And there was not a law at that point that said that you had to use your seat belt. We used it for the novelty of it, but then when it came where it was a law, people were saying, well, they can't tell me I have to do this. And so, you know, there was that debate for a little while. But now, if you pull up at a traffic light and you see children not in child safety restraints, or parents not buckled in, you think, what is wrong with them? So it's our hope and our goal that say, five, 10 years down the road, if you walk in and you see a baby all wrapped up in a blanket in bed, that you'll go, what is up with that? Because it will have evolved to where it's an accepted practice that everyone knows about it and they're practicing it. But it is going to be an ongoing process. I've had many site visits just in the last month where I've been going out talking about safe sleep. And a lot of our providers are going to be the ones that have to educate the parents on this because some of the parents are not aware of this at this point. And I will say, as a nurse, even some of the hospitals are a little slower to catch on with that. They adopted the back to sleep really well, but they're having some issues with getting rid of that blanket that seems to be a hang up. I think it will evolve over time because statistics don't lie, you know? They, they have shown that that has been something, that has been a cause of sudden infant death syndrome in the past. And we, if we can protect just one child, keep one child from suffering from a SIDS death, then it's worth all the efforts involved. And I think little by little, people will start to grasp that and, and that will be an accepted norm in the future.
So are we getting rid of the Linus syndrome because he won't need a blanket after each-
Well, if they're out walking around, they can carry their blanket, they just don't want him to have it in bed.
They'll be a blankie or whatever.
Okay, Council, are you all right?
Let's go.
Okay.
So we'll have that prepared for the mayor and council.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll move on to agenda item number six is recycling update. Sanitation staff members and Rick Gilligan, representing Western Recycling, will be giving an update on the current status of recycling services and how it affects the citywide recycling program.
Good morning, Mayor, Council. Tom Hertman, Deputy Works Director. I'm joined with a-
Debbie Brady, Recycling Coordinator.
Brian Waller, Operations Supervisor.
Rick Gilligan, Western Recycling.
So we wanted to come today and talk to you about some of the volatility in the recycling markets right now and how that's having an effect on our sanitation department. So first off, we're just going to kind of give a little bit of a history of where, how we started this and where we've gone up to date. And then Rick's going to give, talk a little bit about some of the struggles that he's facing with the current recycling markets. And then we've got some options we'd like to present to you.
Okay, I want to give you a little bit of the history of our recycling program. The mayor at the time challenged us in 2007, put together a committee, and we looked at all of the possibilities for a curbside recycling program. At that time, co-mingled was the way to go. And so in 2008, we presented it to city council and they approved it. And we kicked it off in April of 2009. At that time, everyone paid $5. It was strictly voluntary, paid $5 a month, and it was picked up every other week. So then we were fortunate enough to be able to, we had such an interest from the community, we were fortunate enough to go full service in 2011. So anyone that had a green automated trash cart could also have a blue recycle cart. And we did a great study at that time. And so we were able to increase the cost of the trash program to just 25 cents. Everyone paid 25 cents to recycle. It wasn't broken down like that, but that's what it figured out to be. And so right now, we have about, mm, close to 15,000 on our recycling program. And we have a very low contamination rate. Our residents do an awesome, awesome job. So we do- So we do average about 200 ton a month of recyclables that we collect. And so, since January, is that right, Rick? January, we've had some issues with the plastic portion of the recycled products. So we can no longer, as of January 1st, no longer could we take plastics 3 through 7. And so it's been a challenge, and I think it's gonna be a challenge in the future. Our contract with Western expires December 31st of this year. We've had a cap on our recyclables at $70 a ton. So last month, we paid $14,000 for our recyclables. So that's a little bit of the history of the recycling program.
I don't quite understand. We paid $14,000, but.
We paid, go ahead.
So it's $14,000 to, is what the cost is to get rid of the recycled materials? So the city subsidizes the recycling program a little bit.
Okay.
Okay.
And he's losing money.
Right.
We're subsidizing.
Right, and so China has put new regulations on all the recyclers, and all that, Rick, these are the experts, I'll let him talk about that, but China's put a bunch of new regulations on what they will and will not take, and it's causing the cost of recyclers to really skyrocket.
What would be the comparison between the $14,000 that we paid and what it would have cost us to put it in the dump?
So, right now, we're capped at $70 a ton.
Right.
And like Debbie said, that contract expires at the end of this calendar year. The new contract is probably gonna be considerably more than that to get rid of them, but to go to landfills, $29 a ton. So it's a considerable difference.
And as of December 31st, that cost will be a lot higher with any contract that we get involved in, because right now, we're paying $70, it's capped, and as the sheets that we gave you guys, you can see what the actual cost would have been.
So if you look at the first one here, sorry, 18, the May 18th, so the invoice to get rid of the recyclers, $34,983, but the city was only billed $14,490. So the cost of recycling has just skyrocketed, and the recycling firms, the MRFs, the sorting facilities are really taking a punishment right now, pretty hard on the recycling market.
And I think Rick can speak about that a little more if you.
Yeah. Thank you for remembering me. We have a mess right now. It's not a Pocatello problem, it's not an Idaho problem, it's not even a US problem, it's a global problem. China was kind of the dumping ground for the world's recycling materials, and they manufactured goods out of them and sent them back out of the country. In 2013, they implemented what they called the Green Fence, and it was an initiative that came down from the Chinese government, that we're gonna start inspecting and giving more scrutiny to items that are imported into their country, and we're going to eliminate some of the materials coming into the country to contaminate. That initiative went on for about eight months, and at that point, they felt that they had accomplished what they set out to do, in reduction of contamination imports, and so the whole thing kind of went away. And, you know, and then in 2016, they decided that, okay, we're right back to where we started from, you know, this time, we're going to go, they call it the National Sword now, and we're going to implement and we're going to enforce more stringent restrictions on imports into the country. Since they implemented that, everybody thought that it was probably just gonna be another Green Fence and that it was gonna go away. That wasn't the case. They are sticking to their guns, they banned all plastics imports into the country, that used to be where most of the plastic out of the US went. They banned mixed paper as an import into the country. And that mixed paper grade accounts for about half of what's collected of the curbside, on the curbside programs. So, along with those bans, they also implemented a one-half of 1% contamination rate in the materials coming into the country. Now, to put that into perspective, precious metals is 99.99% pure. So, to get this stuff that you see coming in off of the curbside and the mixture of materials that you have there, to get it to 99.5% purity, it's not gonna happen. There's no way, nobody can hit those quality standards. So in essence, what they're saying is, you know, we don't want your interior. So, as a solution to that, we began shipping into other countries, us and the rest of the world too. Vietnam, India, Indonesia, Malaysia, all the other Southeast Asian countries, and they're getting flooded with material. It's a buyer's market. Material that we used to sell, we now have to pay somebody to take. So the dynamics of the recycling changed dramatically and very quickly. The problem that we're having currently is that ordinarily, all these steamship vessels that would go into China are now getting converted into these other countries. They don't have the port facilities to accommodate the number of containers that they're receiving, and then once they receive all these containers, they don't have anything to put back in them to get them back out of those countries. So there's an imbalance of equipment that's taking place right now, and availability of steamship lines and cancellation of bookings, and it's just, from a logistical standpoint, it's become very, very complicated. And the steamship companies do not like to transport those export containers without anything in them, because they want the ballast to keep the vessel stable. So, it's a, it's a different world right now than it was a couple of years ago, and, you know, we as a company, we've not had to landfill anything, we've been able to get rid of everything. Has it come at a cost? Absolutely it has. And, but again, you know, I've been doing this for 40 years, I'm very passionate about recycling, and I'll do my level best to continue to make sure that everything's recycled. But on the other side of that, from a financial standpoint, we gotta go back and we gotta ask for help. We can't bear the burden of subsidizing these programs any longer. As you can see by the sheets, you know, in the last eight months, we've ran out of deficit of $90,000 just by subsidizing the Pocatello recycling program, and we can't continue to do that, that's not sustainable. So, what most communities are doing is they're going back to the ratepayers and raising rates to cover deficiencies. We have a contract with Pocatello City through the end of, through the end of the year, it expires December 31. We intend to meet our obligations on that contract. Moving forward, you know, unless the contract has some substantial changes made to it, we're probably not going to sign up for that punishment again. So anyway, that's kind of it in a nutshell.
So basically, we're here today to, go ahead.
No, go ahead.
So basically, we're here today to just kind of give you, I don't think we're in a decision today where we need your direction. But when that contract expires at the end of the year, we're going to see a significant increase in that cost. And so, at this point, we have several options. We can use some of our reserves for the one-time money to get us through fiscal year 19, and then later in this fall, we're going to a rate study, and we can plug these new numbers into the rate study, and then it will be figured into the rates that we passed on to the ratepayers. That's kind of the option that we think's the best scenario. The recycling program's been such a success, and the community's really passionate about it. But there are other options, you know, of doing away with it, which I don't think anybody really is a fan of, but at the end of the day, those are some of the decisions we need to make. There have been some communities that are trying to chase the number a little bit, so they recycle one week and they don't the next. In our opinion, that doesn't seem like a very fair practice. You have one neighborhood that does their best to separate it, and their material gets recycled, and then the next week, the rates go high, so that goes to landfill, and then they don't get the benefit of the work they put in. And so, moving forward, that's the direction that we feel is the best way for the community.
So I have a couple of questions, Rick. We were told that plastics 3 through 7 cannot be recycled anymore, so those are already going to the landfill, is that correct?
Those are going to Western, the ones that get put in the recycling still, and then they sort them out.
They're going to, you're sorting them out and?
Ultimately, they're going to get landfill, yes.
So, so what about 1 and 2s?
Those are no problem to move domestically.
Okay, so they stay domestic somewhere and go from there?
Yes.
There's a company, we've heard rumors of Boise putting all these plastics in an orange bag and.
And Rick handles that.
So, tell us about that a little bit, and what does that do?
Yeah, it's called the, it's a program that's sponsored by Dow Chemical, and essentially what happens, what Boise City decided to do was to sign up for the program, they got a $50,000 grant from Dow to kick off the program. Boise City went out and bought initially 70-some thousand boxes of these orange bags and distributed them to all the residents in the city. And those bag deliveries just got completed in the middle of May, and so we're just finally getting into full implementation of the program. But in those orange bags, they're wanting people to put any types of plastic films, 3 through 7 containers, toothpaste containers, you know, anything that's plastic, essentially. Tie those bags off, put them in their recycling cart, and they'll be collected by Republic Services, brought to our sort facility in Boise. We pull those orange bags off the sort line and isolate those as a separate commodity, and then we'll bail those up and ship them to Salt Lake City, to a company called Renewology, and they run them through a virolysis operation to make diesel fuel. So it's a, it's a pretty, it's a pretty extensive program. Now, moving forward with it, you know, the initial bags were distributed free of charge to the residents. Once they run out of that initial roll of bags, to restock, they're working with Albertsons to have them put them on their shelves in the store, so that people can go to an Albertsons store and resupply themselves. But, you know, that'll be where the real test is, is, is somebody gonna make that effort to go resupply with these bags, or are they just gonna stick with it and just gonna throw it away?
So the rumor of Boise having all these big orange bags stacked up and some filled is not true?
No, as a matter of fact, we just shipped the first load of orange bags to Renewology on Monday.
Do those orange bags get recycled with it?
They will, yeah, yes.
Debbie has been in contact with Renewology, and I think they're not accepting much more.
They're not accepting any more.
They've kind of reached their limit.
They've reached their limit.
Okay, so the option for Pocatello is out.
Is not.
And just to kind of give a scope of that, Debbie spoke with them, and the infrastructure to process that, it costs $4 million to do 10 tons of plastics, and so we're pushing out 200 of, you know, cold mule, of course, but a great deal of that could be these. So it's a very expensive endeavor, and they're kind of tapped out from what we've heard of taking any more of it.
Yeah, they're looking at, basically, it would cost you $4 million to build a facility, and they would help you with that, you know, build the facility, and then, bet all you could process a day would be 10 ton. And I'm like, oh, that would not work for us at all.
That's basically one truck.
Especially plastics being light.
So it's a pretty tricky deal.
So what is happening in other parts of the country and the world? I've read where, you know, this is a global issue. I've read where communities in Europe are coming together and being able to find some way to do it themselves. Is there any movement in the United States to have that happen?
I think there's going to be that, but it's just gonna take time to get those built. I think pretty much everything that's, that is going through these facilities, they've pretty much got sold already, and so until there's some more new entrepreneurs that start new businesses, which I think this is going to spark, it's gonna spark more businesses to use it.
I think the bottom line is turn this problem over to Idaho State University and their Innovation Center, and it'll be solved, so.
Shoot, we just get some not orange bags, but maybe blue bags, and take them to ISU.
Orange, black.
Not black bags, black and orange, not blue, we don't want blue and orange mixed at all. Black and orange, I'm sorry. Apologize to all the ISU fans and add the Boise State fans again, hope that we would support you here, but.
The best solution probably has not been discovered yet, is that what you're telling me?
Correct.
Is there a movement in general to get away from using so much plastic? Is that happening as a result of this?
Rick, you can.
Or not?
I think ultimately, yes, that's going to take place. I think it, you know, we, in America, we overpackage everything in my mind, and, you know, there's, a lot of it's unnecessary, a lot of it's unneeded, and, you know, it's just like buying individual water bottles versus a gallon of water, or use a tap water, or refillable cup, or whatever. You know, I think a lot of that stuff's gonna take place, and, you know, waste reduction in the United States needs to take place, you know, and we need to, we need to have more domestic marketing options, particularly on the West Coast, because we don't have any real consuming mills on the West Coast, other than the Northwest. We have, you know, all of our cardboard, we sell domestically, so that's not an issue. And primarily, the mixed paper that we, is the only item that we export. So there is, there is a domestic mill in the Northwest, we have allocation into, that is running mixed waste on an experimental basis, and they're going to try to make some kind of a product out of it that'll be desirable in the marketplace. Now, whether it works out long-term, I don't know, I hope it does, because, you know, in my mind, I've never been a fan of export market conditions or the vulnerability that we have there, so whenever possible, we always sell domestically, because there's just too much risk, and this industry for years has known that we, the vulnerabilities that we had with, because of our reliance on China, and just never expected it to happen, and never expected it to happen in such dramatic fashion either. But as a whole, the recycling industry, you know, I'm confident that, you know, we'll make it through this, and we'll get infrastructure here in the United States to consume a lot of this material, and we'll move on, and market conditions will improve, you know. Over the years, there's always, they've always been cyclical, and I've always said, you know, it's, you know, in this business, it's not for the faint of heart, because, you know, it can be feast and famine, and it certainly has proven to be that way over the years. But, you know, every time we've seen one of these valleys, you know, we've always got back to the top of the hill too, so, you know, I'm confident that that will happen again.
Well, this could simply be a correction in terms of what the product is that you're treating, because I was on vacation last week, and we went through a deal where it really talked about how plastic straws are one of the most problematic impacts to our environment. I know that here in Pocatello, when we did river cleanup, it's amazing how many plastic straws are down in that river. You wouldn't think that, but it's. You wouldn't think that, but it's the number-one thing that we encounter doing the river cleanup. I think that people are going to go to alternative natural resource materials, which will be more easily recycled, probably be in the paper market, where we see some of that happen.
And there's already communities that are doing things like that, being proactive and getting rid of plastic straws, plastic bags, styrofoam containers, those plastic clamshell boxes that you get salads in, all of those could be like recycled paper boxes, or, you know, other materials that are more easily recycled, so there are...
It's kind of sad, though, because I, when I first started educating people, I was like, oh, I'd go to restaurants, okay, try to get those plastic containers, because they can be recycled instead of styrofoam. Now I gotta go back and say, okay, get the cardboard containers instead of the plastic. And so, it's just an education process, and when I educate the kids at the schools, I always just tell them, and this is the way every one of us need to think, is when you say the three Rs, you say reduce, reuse, and recycle, you should do it in that order. You need to reduce what you purchase, and then reuse what you purchase, and then your last alternative is to recycle it.
Well, and it gives consumers power, you know, if they don't buy all these plastic products, then there's power in that.
Yeah, now buy glass, because we have glass recycling.
But to your point, we were saying, stop buying glass, use plastic, because glass doesn't recycle, so.
Now we do.
That's right.
But just as a, just to give you kind of an idea of the amount, level of contamination that we deal with, in our, in our sort facility in Boise, we take in 3,500 tons a month of commingled material to sort. Fifteen percent of it ends up back in the landfill, because it's stuff that's not supposed to be included in the program, so it's a significant problem.
One last question. I'm aware of communities that demand people do the pre-sorting. I've visited friends, I think they had three or four different containers that they had to put the recycling stuff in, and it was a mandatory recycle. If you didn't do it, there were, I think, some fines that came to them. But we're in the West.
Yeah, our problem is, is like $29 a ton to throw it in the landfill versus $70 a ton, which is a cap right now. So, Councilman Johnson, it would have been like an $8,500 difference last month, if we'd have landfilled it versus paying for the recycle process.
So I'm interested in moving forward, though. You keep saying $70, because we're cap, what's the real number? Today, if we didn't have that, what's the real number that we would be?
$169.
$169, so really, truly, that's what we're looking at moving forward, council, is $169, $170 a ton. That's today, who knows what next week does, but that's today. And so, there's, there's some issues there, and one thing that worries me is, we're always seem to be on this side of the state anyway, the tip of the spear when it comes to this kind of stuff. So after this program airs for a few times, we're going to get a lot of phone calls and nasty grams from people saying, you're not recycling, and you're not doing the right thing, and you're not this and that. It just kind of goes with it, because when we were told in January, we had to stop the three-through-seven plastics we got blasted with, you know, this recycle thing. So we really, truly are in a problem. I agree, Rick, we're gonna, we're in a valley, and we're gonna end up on top of the hill again eventually, but we need our citizens to recognize that three-through-sevens, don't put in there, because Rick's doing everything he can to keep the price down for us. And it's going to change, our world will change next year, is what's gonna happen in...
So if we were to try to figure this all out, it'd be about 2,400 tons a year, times a 170, is that what I'm hearing?
Take that by 15,000 recyclers, that's two and a quarter a month.
Yeah, that was kind of the preliminary things we looked at, is, you know, it's, just the cost itself would probably be a little under $2, or close to $2, to the ratepayer extra a month, but that doesn't include, you know, the fuel and all that stuff, so it's, that's a rough number.
And actually, the June, the June pricing improved by $5 a ton, so instead of $169, it would be $164 in June, so maybe we're seeing a trend here.
We hope we have a trend that goes way down below the $164 number.
I had a comment, and you kind of touched on this a little bit, but I think recycling is something that is very important to people in our community, and the public is very interested in recycling. And I'm probably not saying anything that our Public Information Officer hasn't already thought about, but I'm wondering if we kind of proactively can put some things out there saying, maybe like a survey, it could be either through Facebook or something, where people could comment, you know, here at City Hall, and say, hey, are you willing to pay a few extra dollars to continue recycling? And I am assuming that most people would say yes, because that's the feedback I've been hearing, but it would be very interesting to get that out there and get people thinking and realizing kind of what the reality of our situation is, and if we have buy-in from the public, then I think that would go a long way in helping alleviate some of those calls, and people being upset and not understanding what the reasons are, and that type of thing. And maybe we can even take it, you know, to the other level and say, do you want to pay even more to do the sorting, or are you interested in cardboard containers and having more regulations? I'm not convinced that people would, but it would be interesting to get feedback, I think, from the community on that, and get some buy-in.
Maybe we could have some.
And are there other companies similar to Renewology that might be interested, and if we were to do a pilot program like the one they're doing Boise with the orange bags, is that, do you recommend that, is that a possibility?
We haven't heard of anything, but we can continue to look.
Oh, yeah. Because I feel like that's all, to me, it sounds like that's a good option as well, if we're able to separate three-through-seven, and perhaps find somebody who might be willing to buy that.
And I think like Rick had talked, this is a global issue, and so I think everybody's grabbing at those same opportunities, you know, so there's limited resources there that are available.
And I think along with what Heidi was saying, I mean, it is a global issue, and so the survey would be a chance to gather information, but it would also be a chance to educate, too, because the people that I've been talking to, when we first took away three-through-seven, they were just angry and thought that it was just the city didn't, wasn't committed to recycling, or that, you know, we wanted to cut costs or something like that, and I, but when I explained to them what was really going on, their tone changed. So I think part of it is, is getting that information out to the community, and making sure people understand what the problems are that we're really facing, and then get them to buy into the program, and that we are committed to it, but we're facing these very real issues, so how do we deal with them?
Maybe we need to do some infographics or something.
Yes.
I do have to say, the staff's really good. You know, I've been in the office when Debbie enjoys standing on phone calls, I mean, you know, that's the first thing, hey, wanna sign up for recycling, and Debbie is just awesome at getting the information, you know, well, I thought it was, you know, one-through-seven, and she's done really a good job of getting the information out, as well with all the staff that answers the phones and stuff, so.
Yeah, I agree, Debbie does do a great job. We just want to make you not have to get the phone calls when they're mad initially, you know, so you don't have to explain it.
Then you get to explain it to them, and that helps.
Get them some information upfront.
Because when they do know what the issues are, I think people are understanding, so, and we can gather information, but also provide information at the same time, I think is important.
Yeah, I think that, like the residents, you know, when the plastic thing came about, it just threw the residents off on everything. They thought then we couldn't do paper, we couldn't do this.
Right, there was a lot of confusion.
It only, you know, affects the plastics, it's not that big a deal. Because seriously, for a lot of people, the plastics, if we could just keep the plastic bags out of the recycle bins would be the best thing ever, and I don't know how many times you have to tell people, no plastic bags and stuff, but the plastic bags are by far the worst issue, don't you think?
Absolutely.
Well, the state's trying to tie our hands on that one.
Yes.
I mean, we need to say that, the state has made it where cities cannot manage their waste.
You can't ban plastic bags at a city level.
Okay.
Okay, we'll move forward, we'll survey.
Thanks for the positive report.
That's what I tell everybody, it's a grim reaper, Jerry.
Well, we have glass recycling.
Yeah.
It's not on that move.
Thank you.
It's really better anyway.
We'll move on to Agenda Item Number Seven, Aid for Friends. Aid for Friends representatives will be present to update the council on a new homeless shelter project. Idaho Housing and Finance Association has selected the project as a community's investment, and is willing to contribute funding toward it. I don't think we're gonna go through all the pages, but we clearly can take a break if we would like to, council. We need a five-minute break, okay, we're gonna take a five-minute break, and then we'll come back for a few minutes. Thank you. Thank you for joining us after the break, we'll go ahead and get back to business here, Agenda Item Number Seven, Aid for Friends. Aid for Friends representatives will be present to update the council on a new homeless shelter project. Idaho Housing and Finance Association has selected the project as a community investment, and is willing to contribute funding toward it.
Mayor and council, thank you, just for your availability this morning, and also allowing us to participate in this study session. My name is Brady Ellis, I'm the Vice President of Housing Support Programs at Idaho Housing and Finance Association, and we've, well, if you're not familiar with IHFA, we've offered a few items for you to look through at your leisure, not to be intimidating or to, you know, ask that you do that now.
This is why we took a break.
We are acquainted with you, and are very appreciative of all you've done in the state and our community.
Great, well, thank you, thank you. So if there are any, any that aren't, you know, familiar with IHFA, we do a wide range of activities in the area of affordable housing, anywhere from homeownership down to homelessness programs. So we touch anybody that's at zero income, or up to about 120% of the area median income. I'm here with BJ Stenzlin, the Executive Director of Aid for Friends, who has been here in Pocatello and serving the community for quite some time, and we would like to inform you, if you're not already aware, of our initiative to provide a new shelter to Aid for Friends. And so I'll hand it over to BJ, and let her just speak about Aid for Friends for a little bit, and then we do have a request to make a little bit down here.
Okay. I also want to thank you for squeezing us in, and I want to thank you for the break. I didn't realize how badly I needed to, so, thank you, mayor. We also have board members that are here, and I'd like them to introduce themselves.
Shannon Ansley.
Scott Heide.
Jeff Grob.
Aid for Friends is a product of Pocatello. We have no other national affiliation. Aid for Friends was created and established as a community response to a tragedy that happened here in Pocatello in the winter of 1983 and '84. A man died from hypothermia, another man died, or didn't die, we don't know if he died, but he had his foot amputated because of frostbite. And it was the community that came together and said, we need to have safe, secure housing. At the beginning, it was a grassroots movement, we had the interfaith churches' support by providing places for people to stay in their basements, pocket apartments, and even private homes. And later that year, Bannock County provided a very small house on South Fourth. We were there for a couple of years, and then in 1988, we moved to the location we're at now, for the past 30 years. So for 34 years, Aid for Friends has continuously provided services of emergency shelter meals, those basic necessities that people need as they move from being homeless into being more self-sustainable. Last year, we had come through our doors 465, 69 people, and that equates to over 12,000 bed nights. That's huge, that's a lot of people, one person, one night, for one bed. Our shelter has 34 beds, and I want to thank those of you that came on our little tour in February, and if you haven't seen the shelter, please come talk to me, we can arrange it, because I think it's really well worth seeing what we've been able to do for 30 years, accommodating and providing the shelter. As you know, we have three floors, we can accommodate 34 people. I did a little random study, and for the last six months, we've averaged 40 people. So either the family size, we double up in beds, or we've been using cots. We, and I've said this before, I'm seeing a trend of more single women, and we're having more households with children. When I first started, which was a long time ago, occasionally, we would have a single woman stay at the shelter, maybe two, and a couple of families, but it was primarily single men that were needing the housing. It's changing, it's changing. The households, and the families, and the children are often more numbers than our So with the shelter, having it three stories, we have, year after year, done projects to keep it together. We're over capacity many nights, 85% last year we've been over, but we're always doing a project to keep that facility going. I have a list, every year with CDBG, I showed you my list of all the projects that we've done. Well, it's come to a time, and we have an opportunity to continue to meet the needs of our community. We're expanding as a city, and we have an opportunity now to really move forward and get a facility that is handicap accessible, that does meet the needs of some privacy for families, and accommodates the people that come through while they're receiving services, so that they can move on and get into permanent housing. So that is my little summary of Aid for Friends, where we're at, and where our need is.
So, in your folder on the right, you'll see this handout. BJ and I are kind of working our way through that, just so if you'd like to follow along. I would like to make just a few additional comments on the state of homelessness, both in Pocatello, but also in relation to statewide homelessness, and also nationally. So this is an issue that has come up across the US everywhere, not just big cities, that's really what we hear about, the LAs and New Yorks and other large cities, but having worked in this area for a long time now, and having counterparts in other parts of the country, it's just something that is, it's happening everywhere. In the state of Idaho, and you'll see some of these numbers if you go through the report that we provided, we have, in terms of federal HUD definitions of homelessness, over 4,000 people. If you expand that out to Department of Education's definition, which includes those that are couch surfing or doubled up with another family, you're adding another over 7,000 students, not including their family members. So you can, you know, those numbers indicate an extreme issue and need in this area. In Pocatello, there's some numbers offered... In Pocatello, there's some numbers offered on this sheet that indicates a bottom of 694 people. So, the data collection system that we have collects information on homeless households from programs that are receiving federal funding. We know there are other projects and programs out there that exist that aren't included in these numbers. So, again, this is the 694 throughout the years, is really just the floor of what we're looking at in terms of homelessness here in this area. I've offered just a visual aid here of the current shelter. If you haven't, if you didn't have the opportunity to go and tour or be past that. So, at the front, on the bottom left, you see the shelter now. It was built in 1930, and as BJ said, has been operating there as a shelter for over 30 years. So, this was a single-family residence, it's had, initially, it's had additions added on, there's been a lot of different improvements, but certainly deteriorating has had some wear on it, and it just isn't sufficient to be able to house the clients that BJ's working with. And you can, just again, as a visual aid off to the right there, just, we, you know, try and represent what a new shelter might be or could be here in the community, certainly something that is more pleasing than the shelter that exists now, but really, something that has the space to accommodate both those that are needing shelter, but also the services that they need to become self-sufficient and kind of rebound from their situation. So, I've offered some numbers here on the benefit of having homelessness services and other affordable housing interventions on the top back of this form. And these are pulled from some other kind of infographics that you also have in your folder. But some of the data that we have here talks about children being two times more likely to have a learning disability if they don't have adequate housing. 50% of total healthcare costs come from about 5% of those receiving care, and that is unquestionably homeless individuals included in that 5%. Children of 20%, children are 20% more likely to be hospitalized if they experience a lapse or lack of housing. And of the 43,000 people within Idaho that have a rent burden, where they're paying at least 50% of their income towards rent, about 73% of those people are either families with children, elderly, or disabled. So, that is really the population that we're seeing as kind of on the brink of being able to sustain their housing, a lot of times ending up in homelessness that BJ, BJ's organization has been seeing, as she indicated with the large increase in senior families. Ada County, there, which where I'm from, in Ada County, we had a study done by Boise State, and they looked at the cost of homelessness. And so, they surveyed 100 different individuals, and through jails, emergency services, healthcare, they estimated that cost for those individuals is about $5.3 million. They did some modeling based off of work done in other communities to try and expect what the reduction would and cost would be to have housed those individuals, and it reduces it by a factor of three. So, there's certainly a lot of benefits when we talk about providing housing for those that are homeless or not adequately housed. So, that's the work, some of the work that IHFA is involved in. We're heavily focused in the area of homelessness right now. From our mortgage services area, we have revenue that's generated on the repayment of loans that we've issued. So, that interest that's received from us, we look for ways to invest that back into communities. And recently, over the past couple of years, we've put some of those funds into a homelessness initiative account, and we've started to identify communities that we can invest that in. And we've identified Pocatello as a community that has a need greater than other areas of the state, both in terms of the amount of funding proportionate to others, but also in terms of population and the percentage of population that are homeless. So, we approached Aid for Friends a little while back and started to conceptualize what would a new facility look like, what could we accomplish with that, and felt very good about supporting Aid for Friends and their need to have this new shelter. And so, the past couple of months, we've been talking with different potential partners and funders and trying to see if we'd be able to raise funds to match IHFA's contribution. And that is $500,000, so we are looking for a community match of at least 100% towards that $500,000. Now, we're estimating, and there's an idea of a property that we're trying to cost out and look at what the renovation cost and acquisition cost would be for that property. Those numbers are still yet to come in, but we're thinking that the total cost might be between $1.3 and $1.5 million. So, we have a good ways to go in our fundraising. We do have some very good leads and commitments at this point in terms of partnerships and potential funding. But we come to you today to see if there is a contribution that the city might be able to make. So, the city currently has the CDBG program, the block grant, and the city gets over $400,000 annually for that program. At a federal level, eligible activities for that would be acquisition and rehabilitation of public facilities. And so, that would certainly include an emergency shelter. We're aware of the ability for the CDBG program to essentially provide an upfront influx of capital that then can be pulled from future allocations to repay that upfront capital contribution. So, we are asking for $300,000 in CDBG money. And that would be a big chunk of the money needed to create the new facility for Aid for Friends. We think that doing, making that contribution from the CDBG program would be appropriate to try and do that over a period of time where either this loan program is utilized to provide the $300,000 and deduct maybe $50,000 per year over a six-year term to repay that. There is, I believe, a small amount of interest on the repayment of that loan. I know Adam could probably speak better to that. If that wasn't, you know, if that was concerning in any way to Mayor or Council, IHFA would be willing to provide a 0% interest loan of that $300,000 that over time could be repaid with CDBG money. We'd also like to ask that the city contribute somewhere in the area of $50,000 of general or other funds towards the shelter as well. And as I said, IHFA is contributing up to $500,000. We've had very positive conversations with other community partners, and we feel like this contribution is a good way to be spending the CDBG money and city funds. It's certainly going to be matched very heavily by other sources and would have a huge impact on the community's population that truly needs it. There's a lot of other, you know, economic and health and education benefits to having this facility and being able to provide the supports that it does, not just for those that live in the facility, but also those that just need an extra meal because they don't have money that day for food, because they've spent it on rent to stay in their home. So, we've talked about other services that would be available, some job training and resource centers and those kind of things as well. So, that's what we're here to present to you today and happy to answer any questions you might have.
Brady, I have a number of questions. You missed mentioning the $50,000 contribution, $50,000 from the city's general fund. Is that a one-time cost, is that throughout eternity, what are we looking at there?
Yeah, so that would...
Kind of eternity.
That's what I'm wondering.
Yeah, so, we're trying to investigate ways or come up with ways that, you know, doing some modeling on financial stability for continued operations, really, the $50,000 would be a one-time towards the capital needed to construct the facility.
Okay, and so, what is the ask that you've done for the city of Chubbick? Have you asked the same of them and/or the county, Bannock County? What kind of ask have we asked there?
So, at this point, we haven't spoken formally with the city of Chubbick. In terms of the county, we have had some discussions with them. I don't believe any of those contributions are in any way formalized. I don't know if I should discuss those. They are intending to play a role in contributing to the project. That could possibly be the current facility that is being used, basically contributing the money from potential sale of that property towards the project and potentially other contributions.
I think you could leverage the county because you've got some healthcare statistics that go for their indigent fund.
We're working closely, as much as we can, with them in discussion. So, yes, the county is supportive and will, I see, be a partner also. With the CDBG portion, I didn't even think about going to the other city to talk to Mayor England and their city council. So, I just had not even gotten there. We can do that.
I don't know if they even receive CDBG, but you asked for $50,000 of general fund money, and I think the appropriate ask would be $50,000 from them. At minimum, if we're looking at $350,000 from the city of Pocatello, I think it would be reasonable to ask them for $50,000 to $100,000 anyway, personally.
Thank you.
I don't know if they do, and then I have a question for Adam also, if I could get him with the CDBG, and I apologize, council, you, if you have questions, these just popped into my head.
You're asking the questions we have, so...
Okay, well, so, as we know, CDBG is always on the chopping block. So, we are receiving $400,000 a year, the number that was thrown out there that we receive.
Adam Lane, CDBG Program Manager. So, this year's allocation is $445,000-ish. Last year, it was $381,000 and change. So, it fluctuates, goes up and down. Went down to $340-ish a couple of years ago, so, and that was its low point. So, it does, goes up and down, it's always on the chopping block, but, you know, generally, it's believed that it's going to keep coming.
So, we commit to $50,000 CDBG annually for six years. In three years, it goes away, what do we do? We've made a commitment, IHS, Idaho Housing has given us a zero-interest loan because he just told us he would opposed to any interest, and so, we've got this zero interest. We owe $150,000, what do we do?
I don't know what the contract looks like with IHFA, but I would imagine that they would, you know, have contingencies for that to want payment.
You know, I think there's room for negotiation, to be honest. So, I don't know exactly what the terms look like. I don't know if we 100% forgive that, but there may be some middle ground.
But possibly, possibly, the general fund could be hit with another $150,000. Three years, it goes away, I'm not saying it's going to go away, but it goes away next year, the general fund could be hit with $300,000 because that's the commitment we've made. So, that is a little uneasy for me, I mean, I feel a little uneasy, but I'm, I don't think it's completely off the table. I'm just going to throw these things...
It may be safer to do the loan through the CDBG program where you have the money upfront, and I don't know what the type of debt obligation may exist if they are the ones that closed the program.
And so, the program you're talking about is a Section 108 loan through HUD, it's a HUD 100% backed. I think it's 100%. 100% 108 or 100%?
It's 108.
Yeah, 100, Section 108 loans are guaranteed.
Yeah, okay, so, it's a loan guaranteed by HUD 100%. But the terms of that is, you know, it's a private lender even, you know, that HUD facilitates the loan, and they would want to be paid back. So, whether if CDBG went away, you're still on the hook for those notes.
But I would suggest that every community has commitments that are out ahead of where their money is in terms of those areas. Well, the CDBG money, I agree. It'd be hard for them to completely reduce the program to nothing, just at the whim of someone. Well, I mean, the reality is, I mean, probably to your point, the reality is, I think we're in 2016 CDBG money right now.
There's a small amount of 2016.
I mean, so, we're three or four-year differences anyway, and so... Yeah, so, I think the money could be counted on, at least to the minimal we've received in the last few years. I don't think it's going to go away, because I think there's too many communities depending on it. Across the nation, there's too many loads.
I mean, you can, yeah, I mean, every state, you know, receives CDBG. So, I mean, almost every city, I would imagine, receives a piece of it. So many people count on it for leveraging and matching, and it's so embedded, and the chances of it completely going away are low.
So, the question really is if we want to dedicate or commit $50,000 over a six-year period. And that was another question I did have to that point, is can we use $50,000 of that for that, or is it earmarked for other programs?
Well, I mean, 2018 funds are earmarked for other things, so, I mean, you could always move monies around, there probably would be something available somewhere else that you could reallocate for 2018, but, you know, more easily 2019 and forward, you could easily, you know, put $50,000 towards it without hugely affecting the program and other funding.
What other programs do we have in the CDBG that that would affect?
So, the major programs are our homeowner rehabilitation program, our sidewalk program, and then funding community, you know, public facility improvement projects, public service-type projects, which every year, you know, a significant portion goes to Aid for Friends to keep patching up their facility.
How much do we typically spend annually to Aid for Friends for that?
Five to 10,000.
Okay, so, you're looking at an increase of $40,000.
Right, to Aid for Friends, yeah, a significant gift to them, yeah.
So, we have, I know Family Services Alliance is one, CD, CCOG, I think, is one that gets money also.
So, the public facility improvement-type projects, as a whole, usually around $50,000 a year goes to, you know, dividend between, you know, different organizations. It's been higher, it's been lower.
Okay, so, do we spend the balance of that typically on the homeowners' stuff and the sidewalk stuff, or do we sometimes have extra that's left over that we're not spending typically?
There typically are funds left over at the end of the year that go into the next year and gets spent that way. And the biggest dollar amount is the homeowner rehabilitation and the sidewalks. That's the biggest part of the program.
Typically, how much do we not spend in a budget year? I mean, I know you're pulling numbers out of the sky. I recognize we can't hold you to these, but I mean, are we typically not spending $50,000 or $40,000?
Well, you know, I could, we can, and there's other issues involved too, with like, so like with '17, the money came so late, we didn't even touch the rehab money for '17. And we're in, we're near 2018. So, that's, it just came late, and we just were unable to move forward with a lot of things, and we had to be careful about our spending because it wasn't there.
So, could we take that rehab from '17 and put it into this first $50,000? Is there that much money there?
You can do, you can do that, you know.
We just did a public hearing on a CDBG program year, I don't remember what year, reallocation stuff.
On '17 and '18. I can tell you right now, the rehab line item budget is very healthy. Between, between a little bit of... Between a little bit of leftover '16, '17 and what we have coming in '18, which is not available yet.
Could you use all of that for this 300,000 toward it? If it's healthy, I mean, you're, I don't know what healthy looks like, but...
Well-funded. Could you use all of it? You could take all of it and put it towards that if you wanted to. That would kill rehab, you know, programs for...
Well, it sounds like we're talking about possibly making a significant dent in the rehab program anyway.
I think you can make just small dents in all, you know, kind of all areas to come up with 50 grand over six years.
And would the total that you're asking from us change if you get commitments from Chubbick and Bennet County? Would you modify this number? Or is this the number you're asking regardless of what they put in?
I would say regardless of that, we do intend to continue to fundraise. And so, if we were able to get sources or money from other sources, then we could come back and say, you know, what were the contributions? It doesn't make sense to offset here or there.
So, you're saying this is fairly set?
I think so, yeah.
Okay.
I will say that just in looking at some CDBG allocations and programs across the state, Pocatello spends a high percentage of CDBG money on sidewalk work compared to others. It's almost double in the communities that I looked at and certainly much larger than what you'd see from the statewide allocation.
It is huge need, though. We have a sidewalk problem, so that's why we do that. And the investment is well worth it. You know, to say where the monies might be available on a yearly basis if the funding stayed around 400,000, it wouldn't hurt the program much to say, you know, Aid for Friends gets their 10,000 a year, that we keep patching up their facility, and to take 20,000 from sidewalks and 20,000 from rehab, that really wouldn't affect our program and being able to serve the community as a whole much at all. And that could account for the 50,000 a year over six years.
It would really boil down to council making a decision that this is a priority of CDBG for a six-year cycle, just like we have in other years, made other priorities, you know, funding an agency because they were in crisis. Or, you know, we do this shifting periodically. I don't think it'd be unreasonable to think that we could do a 50,000, $40,000 additional allocation. And we've done some bigger ones, Aid for Friends in 2018, 18 or something.
Maybe 12. It's been a while.
I wouldn't necessarily say just Aid for Friends in crisis, but Pocatello as a community and your population's growing and this problem, you're gonna see more of it, I'm imagining. And so, it's, you know, somewhat trying to anticipate and get ahead of that.
Well, the anticipation of growth is also the anticipation of opportunity. And a lot of times, those opportunities aren't realized. People follow meaningful jobs and end up homeless.
In your resource distribution sheet, and this we're sure, why is there so much variation across regions?
A lot of it, so you have different programs that play into that. Some of the funding, so a lot of that's federal funding. Some of that funding is based on, I would say, legacy projects. They've been around for a long time. When funding became available from HUD, there were different ways of determining who to allocate funding to. And once that project's there, it exists and continues. And so, in that sense, there wasn't a lot of being cognizant of distribution, proportionately across the state. Also, it's dependent upon who's applying for funding. Maybe you have one region that has a whole bunch of agencies versus one region that has one or two or maybe even zero agencies applying for funding. Some of IHFA's contributions are based off of the projects that exist. So, it's match money for the federal grants that you get. And so, all of those combined make it disproportionate, you know, for different reasons.
So, are we not doing a good job of Region 5 and asking for that money from other sources?
I don't know if I would necessarily say not doing a good job. You have agencies that are here that are asking for money. You probably don't have as many agencies as other regions.
Compared to Region 1 and Region 5, they have 87%. We have 87% higher need, or no, 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 say that wrong. .362% homeless in Region 1 versus .414% in Region 5 here. Yet, their funding is over double. Where are we missing the ball?
A lot of that funding that you're seeing there, looking specifically at Region 1, is coming from those projects that I was mentioning that years ago. There's a couple hundred thousand dollars available. It's made in one grant. That's how the program has worked, is it's a one project that you're funding. If St. Vincent de Paul in northern Idaho, in Corde Lane, is a well-established, healthy-funded organization and they're able to compete quite well in the competition for that funding. So, I mean, we are now working on, at an administrative level, how do we evaluate the metrics and allocation of funding and trying to find ways to even that out? And even IHFA coming to Pocatello with our own money and saying, "We need to invest here to balance this out."
Any other questions, councilor?
Adam, this is kind of a bold one, but how do you feel about this utilization of your program?
I did not know this ask was coming to me. So, I haven't had a lot of time to think about it. You know, programmatically, it qualifies. It's on point with the city's consolidated plan goals, on point with HUD's goals, you know, spending the money to deal with homelessness. So, it's, you know, one of the things that, you know, we should be doing. And as I think it through, to me, you know, if we look at Section 108 and, thank you, Jason, Jason Triplett from HUD, we're being monitored this week. So, I have that as well. You know, the 108 loans can go up to 20-year terms. And again, the interest rates are just, they're cheap. They're really, really, really low, 1%-ish kind of stuff. So, it could be stretched out further. Again, you're always on the hook for CDBG if it goes away, but that's one of those things. So, and Aid for Friends Shelter is in poor condition. The structure itself, it doesn't serve, you know, the people in there well. So, getting a new shelter would be great for the community. A really great investment.
Does Aid for Friends have a plan?
Yes, we do.
Same location, new location? Do you have a plan?
We are working on, looking at different locations. We have not yet completely secured a place, but we are looking at if we select this one, what the renovation costs are and we should be getting that, I'm hoping in the next couple of weeks. We are well aware of zoning requirements, so we are taking that into consideration as we look. And we are looking at a funding plan also. So, yes, we've been working pretty hard to pinpoint those considerations that we need.
What's the timetable?
For...
For making this happen?
It's really gonna be dependent on securing the funds for the facility. I mean, we can't do it without that.
Is this an open-ended offer from IHFA then?
What's that?
Is this an open-ended offer?
To some degree. I mean, we're starting to reach out to, we wouldn't back out of it, so I will say that. We're starting to reach out to other communities and trying to do similar work. And so, if it was that there was another community that was kind of progressing along quicker, there may be a little bit more focus on that as opposed to some real dedicated, you know, time here. But that's not to say that we would pull back into that funding.
I think our first thrust is to get that matching amount. Then we can move forward. We know the project's stable and secure. We'll get those estimates to come in, but preliminarily, we're looking at over the $1 million anyway. So, it will have to come from many portions of our community. We're not just hitting one or two, not just local government. We're going everywhere. So, it's not going to, I think it's gonna cost more than the $1 million. But once we get to that match, and this is secured, the other 500,000 is secured, we're ready to move on. And by that time, we'll have a pretty good feel. We've got a fairly strong location. Hate to give a hint on anything, but I think it will meet our, I know it'll meet our needs. We've done surveys with ISU Bengal Solutions, did one on eight locations for Walkability Index. So, we know where we're at with zoning. We've done some preliminary estimates and work.
I would like for us to be able to hopefully receive the funding commitments this calendar year. So, you know, come spring, when construction gets going, we'd be able to start working.
And I went on that tour earlier this year. Several of us went on that. And so, we saw firsthand that there really is a need. And I completely agree with that. But I was also struck at that meeting, you know, there were a lot of other entities. It wasn't just Pocatello Council that was there. And there were a lot of people from the county that were there. So, I think this is a need, but I also would really encourage you to get them on board to partner. So, that's happening good. Because I think they all need to have a stake in this.
Absolutely, yeah.
I'm actually just a little bit surprised that we are here again today. I have expected to hear an announcement of who the campaign chairman was going to be and other things. Do you have that kind of information?
Not yet. You mean on the Capitol campaign?
Yeah, yeah.
We're working on it.
I would say not publicly.
No.
We had a very good meeting yesterday with a sponsor for that and they seemed quite committed to it. And so, you know, we need to talk some more specifics about it, but...
I appreciate the fact that you're here asking us. The CBG money, I think, is a really viable way to go. I'm not totally committed in terms of 50,000 from the city budget because we've been struggling with that so much. But I would imagine if we had a better facility and were handling more people, it might impact several other budgets in a significant way in the city. It might cut down some things on policing. I would imagine.
They could save a fire response to Aid for Friends.
Yes.
It could increase too, though. I mean, you don't know what that looks like. So, what I'm seeing is you've got, you're looking for $500,000 match and you ask the city of Pocatello to bank up 350,000 of that match. Is that correct?
Yeah, with an anticipation that the total construction costs are gonna be 1.3, 1.5.
So, I anticipate seeing us coming back for more money in the future after we hit this $500,000 match, the $1 million. I would just anticipate another ask in the future for more money because we're still $500,000, $600,000 short.
Well, I don't think you go about raising money that way where you keep hitting somebody up. You come and hit us and you ask us for what they expect our total commitment could be, which is $350,000. They'd leave us alone if we committed to that because we have stepped out and we've made a commitment in good faith. And they don't want to respond to us in bad faith by saying, "Oh, we undersold ourselves to you. We need to..." I don't see that happening. That's not the nature of fundraising.
I promise, good faith.
I don't see it underselling themselves to us. They're asking for 350,000 of a $500,000 problem they need right now.
Well, but they've got some commitment from the county. And I would think the county could step forward. I'm not speaking for the county, I'm thinking for the county. That they should step forward because there's gonna be an indigent factor that they're taking care of by doing this. Because there's, if you're homeless, you're indigent and you're gonna be up at the hospital and you're gonna be milking that couple million dollars every year that goes to indigent services. So, the county should have a formula to figure this out. I think that if we did the 350 to the 500,000 there, we're at $850,000. I think the county should be able to get us over a million. Just my own gut feeling. And then, it's up to all the other entities that can be approached to do the rest. Chubbicks and some of the philanthropists in our community, stuff like that.
I agree. And we've had those discussions and those are ongoing and feel comfortable and confident with where those are going.
I think Aid for Friends is really, as you said, Pocatello's project. And I really think private industries could, will be willing to step up in a pretty big way. And I just concluding a program with one of my other hats, with the State Historic Society's museum in Boise. I went to a local businessman here and got $100,000 for a project in Boise. And I think there's money, much more money, available for this project than for history.
You got a name there?
I do.
Well, and that's, like I said, we met with a private business here yesterday and it sounds like they will be our sponsor, not just in contributing money or with a campaign, but also encouraging other private corporations, businesses around the area to contribute as well.
And I can foresee that also as longer-term sustainability with that entity, with that business. And that's the other piece. We know that we're gonna be increasing the size of the facility, which will be utility costs, but it's also going to bring in more staff. So, we're gonna increase our employment there. And I think the workforce center that we envision is going to add another layer of services to people that need it the most. Have it where it can be a stop shop if somebody has a job that needs to be done to coordinate that workforce. So, ISU and United Way, there's other organizations that are working on workforce and we could be one of those sites. And I think that's exciting.
Well, it really is, especially if this is a stepping stone to getting people back in the mainstream. I'm really excited for that possibility and I want to see us move forward. I don't want the city of Pocatello to be a stumbling block to the success of this program in any way. We just are stewards of a lot of people's money.
My impression, when we took that tour, was the current facility is just barely a step above Linder and Carter. And I think we can do better.
Yeah, we can.
We need to.
The reality is, we're just redirecting $300,000 that is coming to the city. We are exploring a commitment of additional $50,000 of the city's. Because we're getting this money from the federal government to manage as the way we see best in our community. And we've redirected that money several different times over the years. We used to fund $60,000, I just think for, I'm just shooting in the dark here, but I think we funded like $60,000 for one agency for a while in initial stages. It got up and going.
Our sidewalk program could be overlooked until somebody stumbles and breaks a leg on a bad sidewalk. So, we've got a lot of pulls on these funds that we have to... on a bad sidewalk, so we've got a lot of pulls on these funds that we have to...
But if we, if we hit the 350 threshold versus the 280 that we did last year, this is new money to what we've done, I don't know.
I'm really curious on what the county and what the city of Chubak's willing to do with this, though, as well. I mean, I recognize the ask is 350 here. I feel, and I'm not against it, and I think that it's something necessary and needed, but we're talking about $350,000 of taxpayer dollars that they've asked us to take care of, and then I look at all of our employees that were saying, take another hit on insurance, because insurance goes up, and take, slow down on raises, because they kind of, you know, I look at, don't buy this and don't buy that, I see all kinds of different things that have been pulling at us, and we've been working extremely hard over the last four or five years to dig our way out of a two-and-a-half million dollar debt and a hole, and we're finally getting close to being out of that, and now we're looking at another $350,000. Now, $300,000 comes from the federal government. Why is the ask 50 from the general fund, why not 350 from CDBG and go seven years opposed to six? I mean, maybe, maybe there's that option, I don't know, but I'm having a hard time being the, being the one that says, yeah, we'll take this $350,000 and run with it, and county and city of Chubak, hopefully you guys do something, we don't know where you are, so I think that discussion needs to happen before a solid commitment comes from this board, and if I'm completely off-base, I'm off-base.
I think we can either be the leader or the follower. If we're waiting for Bannock County to make a commitment, and then we wait for Chubak to make a commitment, we end up being the follower, but we're the principal participant in the use of Aid for Friends as Pocatello. Our people, we have the largest population, we are the principal participant in that. Our police gain the greatest benefit of being able to place people there when they're on our streets. We are the principal beneficiary of not having somebody freeze on our streets and having that bad publicity that comes to us. Aid for Friends has done marvelous for, what, 18, 1984 forward, is that what it was?
34 years.
Yeah, so, but it's time to, there's a greater buy-in, and I think we can make a tangential commitment for the CDBG money, and then we can have our discussion about whether we want to use taxpayer, local taxpayer money on the $50,000. I think that's the issue.
This is something that we brought as a consideration, it's not a formal proposal, and like what you said, Roger, it can be looked at in several ways, but at least we came with some options, you know, here's a way that we can really accomplish getting a new facility.
My comment was just, thank you for coming and giving us the proposal. Obviously, this is our first time hearing it, so I think we all need a little bit of time to think about it and, you know, not make any, like, official commitments right now, today, and I personally would certainly want to have a little more specifics, you know, the mayor has said what some other partners may be willing to do, and you said, well, it might be a million, but it might be 1.3, and then it might be more than that, you know, I would, I would want to know some more specifics before I officially, you know, signed up and made a commitment in that regard as well, so I think we need to...
And I want to add, you know, as you're considering using HUD funds, and, you know, of course, it's federal and they're available, and you can do it, so one of my concerns, concern I would have about, you know, me being the manager of those funds, is, you know, there are a lot of strings come with HUD money, so, and you attach one penny of HUD money to this project, for the most part, those strings get attached to it, so it's, you know, environmental reviews come into play, Davis Bacon comes into play, and, you know, all those other strings, so, and it's to the entire project, not just the money you commit to it, so it's something else to consider.
So, that price probably does go up.
Yeah.
It could be, yeah, probably, you know, maybe not, it depends on exactly what the, what the activity is, but again, those, it can put roadblocks in the way.
So, I will, just to piggyback on that, IHFA has a variety of programs that include similar regulations, so we're very familiar with that as we go through the process.
Okay, good. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, if we stay much longer, there will be a lunch meeting.
It already is there. Thank you very much. Okay, then, Agenda Item 8, we are adjourned from this meeting, and Council, what do you want to do with, I don't think lunch is here yet.